Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the City Commission Meeting to order. It is 3:01 on January 26th. If you will please rise and join me in welcoming the Reverend Dr. RB Holmes of Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, who will be providing our invocation. Reverend, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable City Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, and your staff and your team. God bless you all. Let's pray. Lord, we pause here to thank you for this new year. We thank you for your divine favor and guidance upon this country, this state, and this great city. We thank you, oh Lord, for our mayor and vice mayor and our city commissioners. Continue to give them good success and good health as they lead us in such a time as this. We thank you for our city manager and his staff and all of the city employees who give so much of their time and their gifts and their kindness to make this an all-American city. Thank you for the citizens of this great city. Now, Lord Jesus, bless Tallahassee with your presence, your peace, your power, and your strength. In your high and holy name, we pray, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see everybody. This is our first regularly scheduled commission meeting of 2022, and we're going to set the record straight that this is going to be a great year. I want to encourage and invite everyone in joining me in this city commission and all of our staff in setting the example as how civics should be done and how we can all be respectful to each and every one of us during this meeting and for everyone that is watching on TV as well. Let us go ahead and move forward. Do we have any agenda modifications, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, items 5.02 and 5.03 have been added to your agenda material. We've updated the title in item 12.01 to include road, crossroads. We've updated item 13.01 to include a summary of events from last Thursday night that occurred post-publishing the agenda. And finally, we've added an attachment to item 13.09.
Excellent. Any questions, colleagues, on the agenda modifications? Seeing none, we will move forward. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have a couple of presentations this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please bear with me, much like many of you, over the holidays, I was a little sick and under the weather. I still have a little bit of a cough, which I will be sure to take care of. Have it coming up. I've asked the mayor pro tem and Commissioner Williams Cox. Well, actually, if all my colleagues would like to come join, that'd be great. But the mayor pro tem will be presenting with Commissioner Williams Cox a proclamation to FAMU because I think I have enough in me to read one proclamation, and they're going to read the other. So for the first proclamation, come join me, please. I would also like to ask Robin Hassler-Thompson of the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, board members Kia Thomas and Debbie Kearney, if they're here. I know Susan Turner and Vania Aguilar of the FSU Center for the Advancement of Human Rights is here. And I believe all representatives of the International Rescue Committee. Who am I missing, Robin? We can have everyone, please come join us for this very, very important proclamation. I also want to recognize Aaron Collins. Aaron, are you with us as well? Aaron, you can come up if you'd like just to be with us, or, okay, you're good. Aaron is with the Florida Alliance to End Human Trafficking, who received a proclamation recognizing January 11th, 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Day. And we appreciate you joining us today. But it is my honor and privilege on behalf of the City Commission to present a National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month presentation through proclamation. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a $150 billion a year global criminal enterprise, a civil and human rights violation, and the National Human Trafficking Hotline ranks Florida as third in the number of calls. Whereas human traffickers take advantage of crises like the pandemic and natural disasters by exploiting those who are harmed and/or are economically insecure. And whereas COVID-19 has exacerbated existing inequities and inequalities and harmed already vulnerable communities, including children and youth, persons of color, the LGBTQ plus population, homeless and displaced individuals, persons who are deaf or disabled persons, people with substance abuse disorders, immigrants, and individuals who have financial hardship making many more people vulnerable to human traffickers who exploit the lack of basic needs. And whereas local governments can play a vital role in preventing sex and labor trafficking -- excuse me, Robin, I'm sorry -- in supporting trafficked persons by educating many like inspectors and emergency responders, utility workers, many other municipal employees, and supporting community centers with information and support from vulnerable populations. Whereas the Tallahassee Police Department has focused and has very strong efforts. And whereas the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center, working with the International Rescue Committee, have demonstrated a strong commitment to fortifying and educating the community against human trafficking and assisting survivors of human trafficking to help them heal and rebuild their lives. And whereas January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and is also observed in communities across the country, now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize January as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month in witness of each and every one of you today, dated and signed January 26, 2022. John Daley, Mayor of Tallahassee. Robin, it's my honor to present this proclamation to you. Thank you for all the incredible work each and every one of you do. And Robin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor Daley. Thank you. It's great to see you, Commissioner Richardson and everyone. It's a true honor to be with you today again on this very sad day that we do have to know that human trafficking is a reality in our community. Really, to hearken back to what the mayor was saying, in our own work, we found that our caseload has tripled since the onset of the pandemic, that truly traffickers do take advantage of those who have any vulnerability. And that while that reality is there, we also know the great news is that together, it does truly take a village for us to do this work. And having the support of local government and the City of Tallahassee means so much. So we're so grateful for that. And we'd also like to let you know that there's constant work going on in our community. We welcome you to join us. And that includes letting everyone from the business community to local governments know about human trafficking, how to recognize and respond and take action. So this is a crucial part. You know, we've got strong representation from our board and our partners here today, and we're just so grateful to everyone who's here. So thank you all so very much.
I want to give credit where credit is due to Commissioner Diane Williams Cox for the idea of this next presentation. Would love for you and the mayor pro tem to be able to present it, and thank you for putting up with my cough. So President Robinson, if you'd like to come join us with your team as well. Turn it over to you.
Mr. President, it is my absolute honor to present this next proclamation on behalf of the mayor and my colleagues on the city commission to the FAMUli and all of the great work that you all do in our community generally. But certainly since we have been encumbered by this pandemic since early 2020, the FAMUli was one of the first agencies throughout the state of Florida and probably the nation to establish a testing site on the campus where individuals could get tested to determine whether or not they were positive for the coronavirus. And have continued that work up until now and added even not only the testing site, but an opportunity for individuals to get their vaccinations. In my family, we live not far from the testing and vaccination site at FAMU now, have used that facility as well. So it is my pleasure and honor, as I mentioned, to present this proclamation on behalf of the mayor, city commission, and the City of Tallahassee family. And the proclamation reads, whereas Florida A&amp;M University opened their COVID-19 testing site at Bragg Memorial Stadium on April 25, 2020. And whereas the FAMU testing site has been a constant and reliable source of COVID-19 testing, providing a vital service to the Tallahassee community. And whereas, over the course of the pandemic, FAMU has tested over 590,000 people. And whereas the Florida A&amp;M College of Public Health, College of Pharmacy, and Pharmaceutical Science, and the Institute of Public Health have been the leaders in this effort and should be recognized for their hard work. And whereas FAMU COVID-19 testing site workers have recently been named the Tallahassee Democrat 2021 Person of the Year in recognition of their dedication and efforts in the face of the ongoing pandemic. And whereas the demand for testing continues to rise, the FAMU testing site continues to be a beacon of light in this community, adding to the many reasons why Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University is known as a college of love and charity and its motto, the excellence with caring. Now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the FAMU COVID testing site and vaccination site for their tireless work to keep Tallahassee safe and healthy. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Richardson, Mayor Daley, and I would say other members of the commission, but I have to call out at least one of them, Mayor Cox, I mean Commissioner Cox, and all of you, thank you for this acknowledgement. And this is part of our DNA at FAMU. We want to be a good community partner. But I always refer to this site as a community-based site because, Reverend Holmes, if I might, in the beginning, right? Everybody, I mean, all elements of this community were involved in the operation of this site. I remember getting there my first time and being directed which way to go by the City of Tallahassee, by the City of Tallahassee, by the government, right? We had the National Guard, Bond Community Health Clinic, the state, and so many others out there. But the city, you know, we really want to thank you for the role that you provided, that you played in making this possible. And I want to just put it in the context, folks, although this is wonderful, 590,000 tests administered at the site, approaching 25,000 vaccines administered at FAMU, including at this site, there's still more people who have died from this pandemic, and those numbers sum up to be, and it's still with us. And so we have to remain vigilant, folks, as we deal with this virus moving forward. There's been one person, one person who couldn't join us today, and that's Dr. Cynthia M. Harris, who is the Director of the Institute of Public Health, Associate Dean of the College of Pharmacy and Pharmaceutical Sciences, who had a conversation with me at the beginning of the week about this in April of 2020. By the end of the week, we had a fully operating test site. There's another person in this room who's been our boots on the ground every single day, and that's this young lady right here, Ms. Tanya Tatum. She works extremely hard. She's extremely bashful, and it's hard to get her to come to these kinds of things. Thank you, Ms. Tatum, for joining us today and sharing in this recognition. But I accept this on behalf of all of these folks, including our students, who have played a critical role from the beginning. They were the first trained in contact tracing, right, for the State Department of Health, and we really, really saw this as an opportunity for them. Then our partners now at the site, I mean, y'all need to know that we started this site in April 2020, testing up to 200 people a day, at least twice this month. We've exceeded over 4,000 persons in a single day. And if it wasn't for our partners, that would not be possible. So thank you so much for joining us here. And so we're going to hang this in the highest places on our campus for everybody to see. But once again, thank all of you. And come by and get tested. It's a very efficient process. I got one this morning, and I'm good, right? Thank you very much.
I'm good with not saying anything because when the president speaks, that's it. No one speaks after the president. But I am so pleased and proud of the work that's taking place at Florida A&amp;M. And I was there near the early days, and I said to Dr. Robinson, do you want to be able to do this more than these few weeks? And he said, yes. So there was always a willingness there to help our community and in the area where people could easily assess it and where it did not cost money. So I am so proud and so pleased that sitting on the highest of seven heels, there's hope and there's a bomb in Gilead, and that right there on the campus of Florida A&amp;M, you can come, get tested, and get vaccinated, and we can bring grandmama and them and everybody. And this is a FAMUli affair. Thank you so very, very much, all of you, for each, the role that you've played in all of this. Thank you.
One last thing, because I would be remiss if I didn't recognize and ask him to join us, Reverend Holmes. Some of you probably are aware that he formed a statewide, I call it ecumenical task force, and asked me to co-chair it, right? And thank you, sir, for that. We spread the word, the things that we learned here in Tallahassee, all around the state and really across the nation. And Reverend Holmes, just want to thank you for your leadership there, and I assist that you come and join us in this photo.
The tall fellow's in the back.
Ladies and gentlemen, for our last presentation today, we have an incredible tradition. Many times a year, we take a second to formally recognize our veterans, but there is an incredible tradition here in Tallahassee called the Honor Flight. And if you have not had a chance to participate, I highly encourage you to do so. And so for our presentation today, I would like to ask Mr. Mac Kemp, please come forward. Chief, good to see you. And of course, the mayor himself, Tom Napier. For those of you that might not be aware, Mac and Tom are truly the backbone of Honor Flight here. And I'm going to ask you to obviously talk a little bit about the program itself, but you all work around the clock and do an amazing job. You've got a great team, a lot of volunteers, but you two have really been the backbone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, City Manager. I am Mac Kemp. I'm the chairman of Honor Flight Tallahassee. This is Tom Napier. He is our vice chairman of Honor Flight Tallahassee. We're here today to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the commissioners for your support over the past many years. This is our 10th anniversary of Honor Flight Tallahassee, and we're very proud of that. The City of Tallahassee has always supported Honor Flight and has continued to support our efforts and our ongoing mission these past 10 years. And our mission is very simple. It is to send World War II, Korean War, and Vietnam veterans to Washington, D.C. to see the memorials that were built for them for free. The memorials were built for all Americans, but they were really built for these veterans that sacrificed and served. And you would be surprised at how many times over the years we've had literally hundreds of veterans come on our flight and tell myself or Mr. Napier that they have never been thanked except by family and friends in all of their lifetime and experience, except for family and friends. So we decided we're going to fix that, and we're going to honor them with a one-day trip to Washington, D.C. so that they can see their memorial for the first time ever for most of these veterans. It's a great day. The one thing that you should do if you don't have a chance to come with us on the flight is on April 23rd, which is our next flight on a Saturday, at 9:40 at night, we're going to have our heroes welcome, where the plane is going to come in to the hangar. The Tallahassee Fire Department is going to do what's called a water arch salute over the plane for these veterans. It's something to honor them. It's something they used to do in World War II. And when that plane turns and they see the hangar, there's literally thousands of people from the Tallahassee community that are in the hangar to welcome them home, waving flags, patting them on the back, shaking their hand, telling them how much they appreciate them. And it's the topping off because they think that when they've been to DC that it's all over, we've done everything. The best part is when we get home to our Tallahassee community and everybody here welcomes those veterans back. Now, our mission is primarily flights, but over the years, we've helped veterans in so many different ways. We participate in countless veteran events all year long. And Honor Flight, I can say truthfully, has literally changed the lives of the veterans that we've served. So it's an amazing thing. It's an amazing thing for you to experience. So we plan a lot of things on our flight, but many times, things happen that we do not plan. And sometimes, those are the most special things that happen. And I wanted to just read you an excerpt from one letter from one veteran. We get hundreds of these, but a letter we received from one veteran after his flight. It came from Captain Roger P. Murray, a United States Navy veteran from the Vietnam veteran era. It was dated Memorial Day, 2018. Dear Mr. Kemp, it is fitting that on this Memorial Day that I write to express my heartfelt thanks to you, your Board of Directors, and the many volunteers who made the May 19 Honor Flight possible. One incident tells the meaning your efforts can have on veterans. I was approached by a woman in the BWI Airport. She asked if I was a veteran of Vietnam. I told her, yes, I was, and she took my hand and said, "Welcome home." Other than family and friends, no one had ever said those words in my Vietnam experience. Her words melted the feelings I had been holding since the anger demonstrated at our return. We may never know who she is, but God bless her, and God bless you all for making my welcome home possible. Your support of Honor Flight Tallahassee has made this welcome home possible and many more amazing stories for our veterans. Thank you for supporting Honor Flight Tallahassee all these years.
Thank you, Mac. I'm Tom Napier, Vice Chairman, all about the Honor Flight. But let me give you a little details about this flight. You heard about how time we get there and when you leave, but we leave at 05:00 Saturday morning. We get, go through registration, we go through, then we got to feed breakfast for almost 250 people. We feed them, go through logistics, and then we go do this, up to their plane to make sure. We got a chartered jet, 160-seat jet, 68-jet. Get them on the airplane, and off we go. My job is get them on the airplane, get everybody ready to go. And I tell that pilot, we got to nine, almost, we got to be there by 9:05 in the morning and make sure we get there in the holding pattern so we get to Washington, D.C. He gets on, off we go. The whole plane, all the veterans and the guardians, they don't talk too much between the two of them. They're all ecstatic about what a great trip we're going to have. We get there, we get to Richmond, get to there, and we get a police escort from there to Washington, D.C. We have a police escort of a gentleman, motorcycle police officer. He escorts three buses, big three buses, 168 people in these buses, going from there to Washington, D.C. And they go through the interstate, and no traffic at all stops except these buses go through. We don't stop at traffic lights, we don't stop anything, but any traffic goes on those interstates that hold us up. This officer will beat on the car and say, get off the road, because here they come. And then we get to Washington, and all the police escort sirens going, and everybody's standing around wondering who they are. Well, let me tell you, the veterans, the President of the United States, at the veterans, are the only ones who are authorized to have a police escort day long in Washington, D.C. Tribute to all the veterans. That is one of the phenomena, what they have to go through. They all the World War II, Korean, and Vietnam. We go through nine stops, and my job, I got to keep track of 168 guardians and veterans. Now, how do I do that? Let me tell you, that's a job. But I can't do it without the leadership of Mac Kemp, the police officers to make sure we get to every stop, we're all time. And Mac says, Tom, are we ahead? I say, yes, sir, we're a little ahead. And he knows we're late, and he said, you got to kick it up, buddy. And we got to get from one stop to another stop with all those veterans on those buses. We go to the last stop that evening, it's at the Unknown Soldier. And then everybody watches the tribute of the God, changes the guard. After that, we have tribute to American flag, get back on the buses, go from Washington, D.C. back to Richmond, the airport. And everybody just going like that. Remember I said a while ago, they don't talk going, but now they're all talking. They had a wonderful time. They'll say, we never will forget this. And they don't ever forget it. It's something so tribute to me, every time I go, this is about the nice trip I've gone on. I have seen something different each time I go. It's a great tribute to work with Mac. We got honor bars of board members, we got 12 board members, Mac and myself, all those put together. It's not me, it's not the board member, we all worked together. We started this 10 years ago. We couldn't even think about who anybody was. How did we get an airplane off the ground with 168 people by donations? And we owe so much to the citizens of Tallahassee and to the City of Tallahassee. I can't thank the mayor and city commission and all the people who helped us get off the ground. Each year we go, it takes everybody to help this goat, and the city commission, mayor, does it. And our tribute to you, thank you some of what you do, city commissioners, vice chairman, and all the city commissioners, even you, Mr. Cook, let's see you there. it. And our tribute to you, thank you, some of what you do, city commissioners, vice chairman, and all the city commissioners, even you, Mr. Cook, glad to see you there, make sure there. Here we go. Honor Flight Tallahassee proudly presents recognition to the city of Tallahassee, the city commissioners, with gratitude for your commitment and support, Honor Flight local veterans, Honor Flight Tallahassee, Mac Kemp, chairman, the board directors of Tallahassee Honor Flight. I present to the city of Tallahassee. I'm sorry, I couldn't. I wouldn't be here without my wife, Juanita. Juanita, hello, my wife Juanita. She gets me up at 4:00 in the morning, and then she helps you get back in bed. But once you get in bed, you cannot, once you get back, you can't get up again.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Outside of Honor Flight, let me go ahead and recognize, Mac Kemp has been the deputy chief of the Leon County EMS since its inception, the ambulance service. And I think everybody will agree, it is an absolutely fantastic service.
Mr. Mayor.
Mac, we certainly do appreciate your leadership. I refer to Tom as the mayor because not only is he the mayor of Woodgate and knows everything that's going on in the neighborhood, but in a previous life, he was the mayor of his city in central Florida before coming to Tallahassee. So from one mayor to another, thank you very much, and thank you for this distinction on behalf of the city of Tallahassee. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say how happy I am to hear that we've got another flight scheduled for April. The last two flights where I have Tom been scheduled to be an escort had to be canceled because of COVID. And so I'm looking forward, and I hope that I'm selected for that April flight. I'm putting my dibs in now, and hopefully, I'll be selected to go as an escort on that April flight. I'll get that to you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Thank you all very much. Okay, do we have any announcements, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we will deal with citizen input on the agenda items as we get to them. We will have space, obviously, at the end of the meeting for non-adjented items and for anyone that would like to speak as well. Colleagues, here's, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Williams-Cox.
I ask that we pause and recognize a former city manager in the audience. You may not recognize her in her red shirt.
We could do that now. I was going to do that on the item, but absolutely, where is Mrs. Anita Favors Thompson? Thank you so much. Welcome back to the chambers. Are you having flashbacks yet?
She likes to see, she's in now.
Absolutely. No, it's great to see you, and I know we'll be hearing from you on one of our particular items coming up. Do we have any appearances by other commissions or appointed boards before the city of Tallahassee?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, excellent. What I would like to do, colleagues, is let's go. I'm going to check in at 5:30, 5:45. Thank you, Tom. See where we are, maybe take a quick break before the public hearing at 6:00, and then we can come back and finish up with other business that we have after that. So with that, Mr. Manager, has any of the consent agenda been pulled?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.01. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11.01.
Special Events Advisory Committee reappointment.
Yes, sir, just making sure I get to my items so I don't miss anything.
It's all right.
Item is our Special Events Advisory Committee. We have two reappointments here. These are actually recognition of reappointments for Commissioner Williams-Cox and Commissioner Matlow. The appointees are Ramara Haynes and Delatrie Hollinger, respectively.
Excellent. We have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Okay, it has been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Mayor Pro Tim, if you don't mind, I'm going to give Commissioner Matlow a second since it's his appointment as well. Any comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.02. Mr. Cook.
Yes, Mayor. Item 11.02 is the appointment of a new member to the Architectural Review Board. That new member is Matt Cooper. Be taken a space from Wayne Spanx, who has served both of his terms and had to have a new member.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, commissioners.
Move acceptance of the recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Jack Porter. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.03. Mr. Cook.
Yes, sir. Item 11.03 is recognition of the appointment of Donna Cotterell to the Citizens Police Review Board. This, again, is a recognition of an appointment. This is Commissioner Matlow's appointment to fill that board's membership.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Move for recognition of Donna Cotterell.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We're on the introduction of ordinance, 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 22-0-02. I know that there's a scrivener's error in the title. It should state Capital Circle Southwest instead of Southeast, and will be properly noticed. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, near the intersection of Woodville Highway and Capital Circle Southwest, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Section 171.044 Florida statutes, provided for several ability conflicts and ineffective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-0-02, and set the first and only public hearing for March 9, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. And one more time, the typo is Capital Circle Southwest, not Southeast.
That's correct.
Okay. Ms. Cook, do we have any, Mr. Clerk, do we have any comment on this particular item?
No speakers on 12.01.
Okay. Option number one is the acceptance of the introduction. Any comment, direction?
Some move. Move, some move.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 12.02. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 22-Z-01. An ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Canopy Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, located on 505 acres in the western half of the Wallonie Toe, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Fleischman Lane and Centerville Road on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 22-Z-01, and set the first and only public hearing for February 16, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay.
Move staff recommendation to introduce the item, Mr. Mayor.
The Mayor Pro Tim has properly moved staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have any other ordinances to be introduced this evening, Madam Attorney?
No, Mayor, thank you.
We're on policy formation and direction. Item number 13.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Let me invite Devin Levens and John Powell to come forward as I introduce the item. It involves the Northwood site, as we have talked about many times, and the future home of the Tallahassee Police Department, as well as the potential for a performing arts center at that location. You'll recall in January of 2020, based on extensive public feedback, you selected the Northwood site as the future home of the Tallahassee Police Department. Since that time, we've done a spatial needs analysis to determine the needs of the police department itself and begun demolition of the site. We have also prepared for the master planning process for the balance of the 29 and 1/2-acre site that'll be left outside of where the police department will be located. In addition, at your last meeting, you directed staff to bring back information regarding a proposal from Mike and Judy Sheridan for the location of a performing arts center at the Northwood site. This item includes a full progress update and recommends that you accept the update and authorize staff to incorporate the proposed performing arts center into the master planning efforts. We do expect, based on the feedback that we have received as recently as last week and the direction that you provide us today, to bring an update in the second half of March. So as we build this information and continue with the master planning process, we expect the next check-in to be in March. With that, I would like John Powell, he's our Director of Environmental Services and Facilities, to begin the update. He will then hand off to Devin Levens for everyone's full benefit.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, as you note, the Tallahassee Police Department has conducted law enforcement operations from its 7th Avenue location since 1972. Over the past 50 years, TPD has grown considerably, both in terms of the number of officers as well as the variety of services it offers in order to meet the evolving needs of the community. In addition to significant space constraints, maintenance, and repair challenges continue to mount within that 7th Avenue facility, and in response, the city engaged in a two-year intensive public outreach effort to solicit input on the potential new location. That resulted in thousands of comments and 68 different sites being proposed by the community. Ultimately, the Northwood Center was recommended by the majority of the public that submitted comments and unanimously selected by the city commission in January of 2020. As the city manager indicated, following site selection, staff initiated the pre-design phases of the project, which included, most noticeably, demolition. The Northwood Mall facility presented a number of demolition challenges, as you would expect for a facility of this type, size, and age. There were underground fuel storage tanks, as well as contamination caused by a former dry cleaning business on the site. There was also a significant amount of hazardous building materials inside, particularly asbestos. So removal prior to demolition was important, not only for worker safety, but also to ensure that these hazardous materials were properly separated so that we could maximize the amount of demolition debris that could be reused, repurposed, and recycled in accordance with the commission's green building policy and aggressive sustainability goals. To date, we have recycled more than 3,500 tons of metal and 10,000 tons of concrete, and we do expect to finish demolition with an 80% to 90% recycling rate, which is well above our initial goal of 75%. We are also on track to meet ambitious MWSBE goals, including our innovative disadvantaged workers program, which provides opportunities for individuals facing employment challenges, such as veterans receiving public assistance, individuals with criminal records, those who did not complete high school, and at-risk youth. It also includes our innovative externship program, which provides training to those at the beginning of their trade careers. So despite the construction labor shortage caused by COVID, the demolition project, as you have seen, moved very quickly. The entire mall facility has now been knocked down, and we remain on track to begin road and utility installation this year, followed by initiation of building construction next year and completion of the new headquarters facility near the end of 2024. Also, as part of that pre-designed process, we updated that spatial needs assessment from 2017 to determine exactly how much and what type of space TPD would need to meet current as well as projected law enforcement needs, and it also included determining the best location for that headquarters building within the overall site. And now that we know the size and the location of the headquarters building, we're able to move into master planning. So I will now turn it over to Devin Levens, who will talk about the master planning process for the remainder of that site, as well as feedback received during last week's community meeting.
Devin, thank you.
Good afternoon. How y'all doing?
Good.
So John just kind of told you guys about the history of it. Now we get to start looking at what's left over with the site and how we move forward with that site. I think we have a lot of opportunity to vision that, and we started that last week with the community. I know there's some folks that were there. We had about 200 folks come out, which is a great attendance on a rainy, cold night. Gave us a lot of good input. Some of the things that myself and the consultants heard were people wanting to see green space, housing, retail options, restaurants, performing arts center, public parking, health clinic. I mean, there's tons of things folks want to see, a lot of good ideas. We want to keep that going, keep hearing from the community as we move forward. The attendees were encouraged to come around the room and visit four stations. Each of those were identical stations. Everybody wanted to be heard, so I think most of them went to multiple stations. So we heard things over and over again, but I think that's good for us all to be able to hear those comments and be able to take those comments. Like, city manager asked, you asked us to bring back a proposal. You'll see that in your agenda from the Sheridans. The Sheridans are here with us tonight. They've also provided a video about the Performing Arts Center that they want to share with you guys as well. And really, just, there's some exciting opportunities coming up, and we look forward to continue engaging with the community and getting that feedback from the community about the site. And with that, I can show you the video.
Sounds great. I'm going to take a break and pass the gavel to Mayor John Marks that just walked in. Mayor Marks, thank you for joining us. Welcome back to your chambers. Good to see you, sir. I'm sure we'll hear from you in a little bit. And please, come here.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Spiehart, the Executive Director of the Council on Culture and Arts, also known as COCA. And as you know, we service and advocate for arts and culture sector. So in accordance with the current capital city culture plan, created from input by residents of Tallahassee, the project addresses these goals to experience and acknowledge the importance of growing new and emerging projects and facilities. So as the Sheridan Center concept developed, COCA assisted by surveying local arts organizations and nonprofit arts community that are doing year-round programming. And we absolutely understand, from what they've said, that they need rehearsal space and audience and administrative spaces. This is something that is absolutely a need in this community.
I am Marjorie Turnbull, and 19 years ago, I had the privilege of serving as the chair of the Citizens Committee that developed the culture plan for Tallahassee and the capital region. Goal for that plan clearly called on the city commission to develop a plan to construct a performing arts venue. At that time, Tallahassee was one of two state capitals that did not have such a venue.
I'm Peggy Brady, formerly of the Laughing Stock Theater Company. In 2018, after 26 years of shows, we called it quits due to unavailable performance spaces. If a facility like the one that's being considered right now existed then, the Laughing Stock would still be doing our shows. From 1991 to 2013, I served as Executive Director of COCA. Past and now recent research into venues in comparable cities revealed that Tallahassee is still way behind, even Gainesville is ahead of us.
Hi there, I'm Laura Johnson, and I represent the Southern Shakespeare Company. Since the Southern Shakespeare Festival returned to the Big Bend in 2014, we have been an itinerant company, constantly in search of venue space for our rehearsals as well as for our auditions, with the added challenge of trying to find space and venues that have the infrastructure that we need for sound and lighting to deliver the highest quality productions we can. We are in full support of the Sheridan Center being built now and will be there at their front doors as soon as they open.
Hello, my name is Patrice Floyd. I'm the founding director of Javasia Arts Conservatory, a 41-year-old bedrock music conservatory here in Tallahassee. I'm here for one reason. We need the Sheridan Center for the Arts. We need it yesterday. Our students need it, our community needs it. I travel all over the world. We're one of the few cities that do not have a performing arts center. Enjoy the arts at large. We need your support today. We need the arts center now.
My name is Mandy Stringer, and I'm the CEO of the Tallahassee Symphony. I voice my support for the Sheridan Center. The Sheridan Center will make it possible for the TSO to imagine new and innovative ways to reach more people with smaller ensembles, such as our TSO Jazz Orchestra. So please, let's get the Sheridan Center built.
Hi, I'm Greg Jones. I'm an associate dean in the College of Music at Florida State University. For us, this arts center represents a really great potential for our students and faculty to have meaningful engagement in our community, something we really can't do right now with our current on-campus facilities. And this opportunity will really be a great benefit to our community and is worthy of our investment.
Hello, my name is Carla Connors. I am the president of the Board of Directors of the Artist Series of Tallahassee. During our 27 years presenting classical chamber music, we have used concert halls at Florida State University, at Florida A&amp;M, and at area churches. But what we haven't been able to do is to present concerts in a hall that area arts organizations call their own. We think that the time is now to provide a new performing arts venue for our community, and we hope that this project is allowed to go forward.
Hi, I'm Tahira Lee, President of the Irish Repertory Theater. We get funding from COCA and from private donors, which allows us to put on up to three shows a year. We also have a mission to educate the community, but we have no home. So I really hope that you will give permission for us to move forward with this Sheridan Center for the Arts, and please, please let us do it now.
My name is Kristoff Cage. I'm the Artistic Director of New Stage Theater Works, and we put on musicals, some big, some small, but 40% of our budget goes to rental fees. And frankly, we don't have a home that people can rely on us to be in. With the creation of the center, we can work with other artists, musicians, and bring them all together as one community. They once said, if you build it, they will come. Well, frankly, we're already here. Tassie's old thing was talent lives here. Well, talent does live here. Let's give us a place to show that off.
Mr. Manager, I think they're kicking it back to you to close it up before going to public. I think so. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our update. And again, we're seeking your direction to accept the status of where we are today. We clearly are in the input stage where we're gathering it from the public. We're doing our master plan. I think it's worth saying that the police department is on pace to be completed in 2024. And so late this year, you can see some construction efforts as it relates to infrastructure, the roadway. So as we build into that, the master planning process is important to make sure we locate the roads correctly, the infrastructure correctly. And what we've recommended as it relates to the Performing Arts Center is to include it in that process. That would be, you know, organically where it would appear, it would allow us to start to vet it and properly locate it and give you feedback on that. So we look forward to your input and additional public discussion. Excellent. Mr. Clerk, I know we have a series of individuals who'd like to speak. I don't do this often, but I'm gonna go ahead and start us off and ask Judy Sheridan to be our first speaker of the evening. Three minutes. We've got the timer right in front of us, and your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor Daley, and Commissioners. I'm Judy Sheridan, and unfortunately, my husband is unable to be here today. I and many nonprofit organizations and people interested in our community are here today for approval to build and manage a performing arts center. If you are here to support the Sheridan Center, please stand and let your presence be known. Thank you. Well, he's got the timer on. I'm here to ask for the approval of the City of Tallahassee to contribute five acres of land, part of the Northwood Center, located at the corner of Tharp Street and Martin Luther King Boulevard, known as Development Opportunity Area One. We wish to construct the Sheridan Center, an approximately 20,000-square-foot center for holding three theaters. A large auditorium of 450 seats to be used for both music and theater, about the size of Opera Men Theater at FSU. A black box theater that can accommodate 150 seats, depending on seating arrangements, about the size of FSU Lab Theater. A flexible, multiple-purpose hall with catering kitchen for rehearsals, receptions, and performances, which could accommodate 100 people for a third theater similar to FSU Alumni Hall. Now imagine this, all in one location, centrally located for use by nonprofits in Tallahassee, along with adequate parking to accommodate the use of all three venues at once. The Sheridan Center is privately funded and will operate as a community center for the arts. It will host theater, musical theater, concerts, dance, small conferences, meetings, and events. The Sheridan Center is established by a naming grant from Michael and Judy Sheridan. The construction budget is $9 million. A capital campaign is needed to raise $3 million additional funds for improvements. The Sheridan Center will sustain itself with income from grants, patronage, rental, and ticketing fees. We would like the Commission not only to approve authorization of staff to incorporate the proposed performing arts center into the master planning efforts for the Northwood site, but also to be subject to a contract between the City of Tallahassee and the Sheridan Foundation, with conditions and contingencies prepared by city staff to be brought back for approval at the March Commission meeting when the master plan is presented. This action will enable the center to conduct a capital campaign and develop plans to begin construction. This is a gift from the Sheridan Foundation, and hopefully, just the beginning of what the Sheridan Center can be. Commissioners, I think you will all agree that the nonprofits need and Tallahassee wants this center, and you have the power to make it happen now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Judy, I know... Judy, I know that Michael is watching this meeting, and of course, we send him our wishes and our thoughts as well. And personally, want to say thank you to the family for stepping up to the plate with this generous offer that has created this dynamic dialogue to move the community forward. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker. Okay, Mayor, we do have another speaker, Donna Cotterell, and then have a couple of others on this item as well. We'll take all of those in person, and then there are a couple that we'll take virtually as well. Yes, sir. Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for having me. I'm gonna keep this on. Sorry. My name is Donna Cotterell. I live in the Bond community. I am the founder and President of Endaba Theater and Associates, and grateful to hear about the opportunities coming to Tallahassee by way of performance arts centers. I was unable to make the in-person event on Thursday. I had a family funeral in Cleveland to travel to. But I do want to say a few words about that, and also about the TLH Arts funding that was mentioned at the retreat, but didn't hear it come up tonight, but I'm assuming it's gonna get rolled into this Performance Arts Center. Maybe not. We are in the close proximity to where TLH Arts was supposed to go. They're in Railroad Square, we're in Railroad Village. There are several vacant warehouses right around us. One of the things that I'm gonna throw out there, that they're buzzwords, but they're really important: DEI and accessibility. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion is very, very important. I, as a young person, was introduced to the arts through a community theater, and I think that having that accessibility, in the Bond community especially, is important. We have an amazing array of talent, as mentioned in Tallahassee, that has, you know, born and raised here, been in the arts. I mentioned Angelie Austin, who danced with the Dance Theater of Harlem for 13 years. She's a professor of dance at FSU. We all have heard about Jawalet Zahler. She's a founder of the Urban Bush Women. They've been in New York City for decades, since 1984. She just got a MacArthur Foundation Fellowship. We've got some really, really famous artists like George Clinton, who just celebrated, I think, his 80th birthday, T-Pain, Cannonball Adderley, Ray Charles. We've even got famous Amos, you know, whose cookies, you know, are well-known, who was born and raised in Tallahassee. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we are also known for a bus boycott in a city in like Montgomery, Alabama, that's also a capital city. Where is our performance arts center, our cultural center, our heritage center to uplift folks who look like me? I am one of those people, and we have some folks who are working with us, some other theater companies. I know my time is almost up, but if we want to be a great capital city, we must celebrate the diversity of our city, and that will get more heads in beds, and it will get more people at local restaurants, and also celebrate the rich diversity and cultural heritage we have here in this beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, our next speaker is Agnes McMurray, and then Stanley Sims. So next is Agnes McMurray. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Agnes McMurray. My address is 9900 Leaving Deer Lane, Tallahassee. I am gonna be very brief and just highlight something that we wanted to highlight because it brings forth the piece of this Performance Arts Center concept that has to do with educational support in the community for the arts. And this is a letter that we received from Superintendent Rocky Hanna in support of the Performance Arts Center. So I will just read that letter for the record. It was from November 19th, 2021. It says, "Dear Mike and Judy, when I recently met with you and School Board member Roseanne Wood, we became very excited about the prospect of your visionary Sheridan Center for the Arts project for our community. Not only will it be a great asset for the nonprofit's arts community, but if it is located in a former Northwood and Wall location, we foresee tremendous educational benefits for our students. We were pleased to learn that education will be one of your central goals. As we discussed, Rob Middle School's arts magnet program would be greatly enhanced by having nearby facilities, such as you proposed, 450-seat auditorium with orchestra and backstage dressing rooms. What a dream it would be for our middle school students to have access to the auditorium and the black box theater. Rutigah Elementary School is also close by, and the Sheridan Center for the Arts could offer wonderful opportunities for those children as well. Lively Technical College and our adult education programs could collaborate with you, and the possibilities are endless. On behalf of the Leon County School District, I want you and others to know that we wholeheartedly support this endeavor and look forward to being your partner in the arts. Supporting the arts is a high priority for both Leon County School Board and my administration. This proposed Sheridan Center for the Arts, located in the heart of Tallahassee, will be a tremendous enhancement and a game changer for artists, students, and the community at large. Thank you for your generosity and for including Leon County School System in your plans and your vision. Sincerely, Rocky Hanna."
Excellent.
So thank you for giving me the opportunity to put that in the record. I think that the education piece of this project is very, very important, and it brings forth that it has that value that may not be noticed if people are thinking about performance. They're not thinking so much about education, but it's an important piece of our plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I do want to take a second to recognize Daryl Jones, the Chairman of the Leon County School Board, who is with us as well. Daryl, thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. Next is Stanley Sims. He is the last speaker we have in person, then we'll go to our virtual speakers. Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
I want a clarification to the attorney. Just want to make sure I'm not in violation of the trespass warrant. I just got this letter. Is it okay to ask a question?
Having a little difficulty hearing you. You'll have three minutes' opportunity, as our other speakers did.
I'm sorry, I addressed my question to the attorney because this is a legal matter.
We're gonna let you speak on this item, and then if you want to talk about the legal issue at the un-adjented speakers...
But then I might be in violation of, and then I might get arrested.
I tell you what, I will take responsibility for allowing you to speak on this item.
I would also wish you would take responsibility and meet with me.
Okay. We can have public comment on the item that's here before us and have a conversation on un-adjented speakers is what I would prefer as the mayor. So please, your three minutes to begin on the Performing Arts Center proposal.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm black. I'm poor, Ms. Sheridan. I have two black sons. I'm an ex-felon. I've made mistakes in my life. But I'm an advocate, free and behind. While I was in prison, our former Secretary of Corrections, Walt McNeil, who is now our current sheriff, had to send the deputy marshals because I spent eight months in confinement, standing up for my limited rights as an ex-felon. Why do I tell you that story? I tell you that story, Ms. Sheridan, because it greets me. Because you get preference to skip the line and come up, even though they're so slow. But the Constitution, at one time, deemed me as three-thirds of a man. And I saw our mayor come up and act like the city is open to everybody, but that ain't true. The rules are different from you. I wear this red shirt, but because of his shortcomings, doesn't reflect our city. Ms. Kathleen Spears, your board reflects diversity, Ms. Spears. You are investing in a good city, in a good thing, but my opposition is not against. That's why I went out there and begged the man for a red shirt. But my Bible says you don't take good seeds and throw them away. We need transparency, and you guys have given us that. You've heard I cry. Eighteen months, I've tried to get a meeting with him and the city manager. Unavailable. Mr. Favors back there, we didn't always agree. Mr. Marks down there, I always didn't agree. But guess what? We had a relationship. I broke down crying when my wife, who is a 23-year city employee in the city attorney's office, came to prison and visited me and said, "Miss Favors, ask them."
Mr. Sims, we are at three minutes.
I bet you I wouldn't have got that from John Daley.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk. Our next speaker will be Jeff Blair. Jeff Blair is connected via WebEx, as is Kathy McGuire. Okay. Mr. Blair, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thanks for joining us. You have three minutes. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jeff Blair, 1803 Old Fort Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am not speaking for or against a performing arts center proposal. Irrespective of whether I totally support the proposal, and conceptually I do, my comment concerns the lack of any real meaningful citizen engagement to date for how the Northwood Center property should be used. There should be a meaningful citizen engagement process with a vetting of alternatives for developing a comprehensive master plan for the entire Northwood Center property with transparent and easily accessible options for participation. At a minimum, meaningful citizen engagement procedures should provide for broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives, opportunity for written comments, provisions for open discussion, public hearings, communication initiatives, and consideration of and response to public comments. Citizens should be engaged upfront on policy decisions from the very beginning and not once they're formed. To date, this is not the case for Northwood Center. Conducting one community meeting a week before the commission is being asked to decide on a performing arts center that uses 17% of the property, and not even during that meeting allowing for virtual, real-time participation during the escalation of a major pandemic is not providing accessible public engagement opportunities. It is disingenuous to claim that there is any broad public support for any option at this time. Effective and transparent and accessible processes to encourage public participation and planning for the future of our city's growth on properties such as Northwood Center, Lake Ella, and the future fire properties is fundamental to democracy generally and to the core values of our community specifically. We want and expect this opportunity for development of our police and fire properties before decisions are made. And again, I am not opposed to this proposal at all. I just am opposed to the lack of citizen engagement in our policies for growth of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Kathy McGuire is next, and will be our final speaker on this item. Great. Ms. McGuire? Joseph, I got you. Joseph, I got you. Ms. McGuire, are you with us?
Yes, sir. Yes, can you hear me?
Your name and address for the record, please, in three minutes.
I'm Kathy McGuire. I live at 1101 Pine Street. I'm chair of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. ATN believes that public input is key to successful public projects. We are thrilled that over 200 people turned out at night in the ring at the crest of the pandemic because they cared enough about Northwood to want to share their ideas. We'd like to thank staff for planning another meeting in March to share initial ideas on the master plan and get input and not just bring us something that's a done deal. It's the back and forth that will make Northwood successful. We hope that cities will also reach out to the individual nearby neighborhoods to answer questions and participate in discussions about the best future for everyone. Regarding the performing arts center, as we've heard already, maybe not everyone who'd like to participate in this discussion has been able to do so so far. If you decide to approve the center here tonight, Commissioners, wouldn't it be better to discuss exactly where on the property it would go as a part of developing the overall site master plan? And otherwise, you narrow the opportunities for the whole property's best configuration. The Monroe-Tharp Street corner is near two schools and a park, and what would best go there hasn't been determined yet. Deciding that it should be right there tonight seems to me to be premature. If you want to approve incorporating the center into master planning efforts, I recommend that it be cited as part of developing the master plan and not as part of your decision today. Thank you for allowing me to participate remotely.
Great. Thank you. And I believe we have one more speaker in person that would like to speak on this item. If you wouldn't mind just filling out the card afterwards. We are speaking on the Northwood Center proposed master plan with the Performing Arts Center. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Batavia. I will not give my address for reasons.
You guys are having a hard time hearing me, man. Did I take this off?
Hi, my name is Joseph Batavia. I am a resident of City Tallahassee. I've been here since May 2017. I will not give my address for security reasons. Just hearing about the Arts Center, I just heard about it just a few minutes ago. This would be a great thing, especially for children as well, to get them out of certain situations for safety, so they could elevate their minds and have a bigger culture of lifestyle and have places to go when they're going through things. And especially for disabled people as well, because a lot of people don't understand what a disabled community and non-disabled community is. We're so divided, but we're not. But this would help to put out more perspective of life and people's cultures and et cetera, et cetera. You guys understand what I'm trying to say? So if this could be possible, anything's possible these days. So let's plant the seed and let it develop and grow so everybody could prosper in the future and present. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak about this agenda. It's truly an honor to be part of City Tallahassee. Thank you.
Good see to it, Joseph.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else here that hasn't had a chance to speak that would like to speak on this item? Okay, so you're done. We'll move into commission discussion. I will start off by saying I am an enthusiastic supporter of this proposal. I look forward to supporting option one and option two at a minimum and look forward to hearing what you have to say as well, colleagues.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox and the Mayor Pro Tem.
I yield to the mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I was going to move options one and two.
Move options one and two. I'll second the motion. On the table, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am in favor of this, and I know that we have been hoping that the day would come where we would have a performing arts center. Being here in the City of Tallahassee, there are a few other things that we don't have, being the capital city of this third largest state in the Union, that I'm hoping that we will be able to do as well. But let's go ahead and move forward with this one. I would like to ask, though, that we consider as a part of this that we have a satellite location at Smith Williams so that the children on the South Side will not have to travel every time to get some of those services. Once upon a time, Gevasia Conservatory actually did their work there in the Smith Williams Service Center. And I'm asking as a part of this, let's reinstitute that opportunity so that Bond Elementary, NIMs Middle School, Pine View, Fairview, Rickert, I think that's all, would have, would be easily, would have easy access that would hit that DEI that was just mentioned by Ms. Carterwell as a part of this. So we'll have a performing arts center where everyone, whoever wants to have an office, they will have one, but that we would have a program, also a satellite program on the South Side for the children there as well.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner, well, Commissioner Porter, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have just a few questions for staff. I'm just curious. Well, first, I want to say I support this project. It was a pleasure meeting with you. This is truly a, well, one, an incredibly generous donation and act and a unique situation, I believe. I hear the concerns and agree with some of the concerns about, I wish we had as a city started the community engagement process for what to do with Northwood sooner. And there are a lot of reasons, I think, for why that didn't happen. But I do think that there is a clearly articulated precedent for the community's desire for this that spans years, you know, decades. And so I think it's clearly been a demonstrated need and desire of this community to have something like this. So I want to make clear my support for this item. My questions are, you know, what does it mean exactly for us to include the Performing Arts Center in the master planning process?
I can answer that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Porter, what that means is nothing beyond the police station has been determined appropriate for the site. The master planning process will include things like road location. You saw, and in fact, if I could get the graphic of the site plan, I think that's helpful for everyone to see. There are a number of general-sized parcels that have been identified very early in the process. So that'll be refined. They'll be shrunk based on community input. What we would expect in March is to come back and say, hey, we heard all of these different kinds of ideas. Here are the kind of things that could go in these different parcels. They're not all suited equally. To include the Performing Arts Center, we would recommend where on the site it could go. The Sheridan proposal asks that it be at that corner. That may be appropriate. It may not. I think the professionals probably should weigh in on that. I think that's probably a good location, but I'm not the expert. So that's part of that process. Is it compatible? Does it work? Does it work with the traffic flow? Does it work with parking, other utilities, things of that nature? So we would include that specifically in the proposal. And the balance of the property would continue. We'd have public input, and we'd have discussion, and we would continue to identify what the commission thinks is most appropriate on the balance of the property and how to proceed. So that's the idea of what it means to include it. We would include it now as a use. Make a recommendation where we think it fits, scale, size, orientation, parking, you name it.
Okay, thank you. And what are the next steps? I know that Mrs. Sheridan mentioned the meeting in March where we're going to be reviewing that. We haven't really had a discussion about whether we are donating the land, whether it's going to be a long-term lease. Can you just outline the next steps for me, please?
Mr. Mantra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, with your direction, we could proceed concurrently with the evaluation of some kind of agreement. That probably can be done in parallel with the master planning process. Clearly, it can't be specific if we don't know where it goes and the exact details. But I think any kind of contractual discussion reveals those. Is it transferred? Is it leased? How does it work? All of that would have to be worked out. There are a lot of details. If it's the will of this body to do that, we could do that concurrently. We could do it in series, waiting for the, where we believe the location shared with the commission, if the commission accepts that. It really is your desire. I don't think it would be trouble to do them at the same time.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in addition to making the motion to accept this item, I do want to thank the Sheridans for their generosity. I've known Mike and Judy for years. They have been upstanding and outstanding citizens in this community in a number of different ways. This isn't the first time that they have made significant contributions to the Tallahassee and Leon County community. Mike has, of course, been a businessman in the community and has hired hundreds of individuals that have come through Fringe Benefits Management Company. And Judy, we thank Mike for that and the support that you have given him in that endeavor. And, you know, I've lived in Tallahassee for a little over 40 years now, and I know on a number of occasions, there have been individuals and groups that have advocated for a performing arts center in our community. This community has said that it didn't have the appetite to tax itself to build such a facility. And so we have the opportunity now through this very generous contribution by the Sheridan family to make that happen with a donation of land from the city, home property that we already own, not like we have to go out and purchase the property. And so it would be, as we've heard from many in the arts community, a wonderful addition to our community and something that is sorely needed from their perspective as well as ours to enjoy the performing arts in that respect. I would, and this is sort of in line with what Commissioner Cox has said, when we were having the discussion about the tax for the Performing Arts Center some time ago, one of the issues that we discussed was opportunities for those from minority and low-income neighborhoods to have access. Commissioner Williams-Cox mentioned Gevasia. At the time, there was African Caribbean Dance Theater, and there are others that don't have the financial resources to be able to rent space. And so when we do this, I hope that we will have opportunities at that location if it maybe has to involve transportation, but that there be opportunities for children and individuals and groups from those neighborhoods to have access to this facility as well. And so as we move forward, if we just keep that in mind and have that be an issue that we are willing to address as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I got Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We talk a lot about plans in our community and plans that have been on the shelf for 20-plus years. And I think a lot of the work that we've done over the last few years is trying to catch up and deliver on plans that have been made in the past. So I see supporting this project as moving forward in that direction. Here's something that this community has talked about and expressed its support of for over a decade. And we've seen different iterations, and we've seen different proposals, but we haven't seen a turnkey out-of-the-box proposal that we could get started on and make sure it gets delivered in our lifetime, in our tenure, you know, what have you. We hear from, since I've been an elected official from arts organizations all across the city, you know, struggling to find rehearsal space, struggling to find performance space, and the places that do have it obviously get booked up pretty quickly. So I'm excited about this opportunity because I do believe while we haven't had a conversation about the Northwood Center and what that master plan looks like, I recognize those criticisms, but I also, as a public entity on this piece of public land, I do think we've had broad community support to deliver on a project like this. So I'm comfortable saying, let's move forward with that. This proposal was discussed at COCA, broadly supported. The question of diversity and equity and inclusion was raised, and I do think we should move forward with seeing what the agreement would look like and include that piece in that conversation. I don't think there would be an objection to that to see what type of access and to make sure we keep it a diverse base and what those guarantees are to make sure. You know, they mentioned partnerships with the schools having access, like flush out all those details so when we see it next, we're not having that conversation again. So I don't know, Commissioner Richardson, if you would be opposed to getting a first draft of an agreement flushed out when it comes back?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I wanted to put a little bit more teeth to that and amend the motion, offer amendment to the motion, that it would include very well what I asked for in regards to satellite location as well as access to the facility that would be there at Northwood and that satellite location there being at Smith Williams.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, and I apologize. Commissioner, if I could ask for clarification, if to the extent we use the city facility, of course, we would work toward that end. But I thought I understood you also to say a satellite program. The programming involved, not just the physical location, but an extension of what would be programmed at the new Performing Arts Center.
Program and location.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you, sir.
Are you looking at the maker of the motion?
I am. I'm looking at whoever I need to look at.
I would accept it as a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. And I support the spirit of that amendment. I guess I'm just not sure, you know, if it's, I don't really know what that looks like. If it's a performing arts center and people are, you know, individual groups are using the space to rehearse, just theater is not, my understanding from our conversations is not that there's going to be like theater classes or anything that can be done in sort of a satellite way. It's kind of something that needs, you need to be there in person for. So I, if you want to clarify, please go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for your question, Commissioner Porter. Several years ago, Gevasia Conservatory held their classes at Smith Williams. There will be a need. It's not just theater. It's performing arts. It's more than that. You have to prepare for it. You have to have rehearsals. You have to have space. And what Dr. Floyd did, she was here earlier, but she had to leave, but she held her classes there and she taught the young people what to do. Right now, they're doing their work up at St. Peter. That's where they're performing. And in some conversation in the community, there is a need to have real access to be able to do those kinds of things, to have rehearsal, to have classes, have programming, so that these children will get that exposure to music and opportunity to perform. And doing that there is something that has been done before. It's just kind of reinstating or reinstituting that opportunity because right now, the kids on the South Side are having to be bused to the other side in order to get that access. And I'm saying, if we have facilities already on the South Side, we have someone who's willing to come down and support the programming, then we should be able to do it there as well as on the north end of town. So that's what I'm saying. It's not necessarily theater space, no. It's rehearsal. It's teaching, opportunity for children to perform and be introduced to the arts is what I'm.
Who is paying for, thank you, Mr. Mayor, who is, again, I want to say, I mean, I'm super supportive. If the, if what you were, if the motion were that we institute a theater program at the Smith Williams Center, I would vote yes in a heartbeat. I am just reluctant to commit the Performing Arts Center to something that I'm not sure they have considered. And, you know, I don't know if there are classes, or I do hear what you're saying. I just want to make sure that it's successful and actually meets the need and isn't overly burdensome. actually meets the need and isn't overly burdensome. So, you know...
Well, it's not overly burdensome for the Sheridans. It's just basically saying that there will be, are those who are supporting it. They will have access to the facility at the Northwood Center, but there will also be programming in the location. Smith Williams is already there. It's a city facility. And the space that they were in is still there and can be used for that. And who pays for it would be who paid for it before. If parents are not able to pay for it, then grants can be made available. Leon County Schools could also be a partner in that because they also have musical programs. So there's a, where there's a will, there is a way to make that happen.
Okay, if I may, so all you're asking is that there be physical space made available at Smith Williams Center?
And the Sheridans don't have to do that. It's city-owned.
Okay, so all we're asking for is that there be space?
And programming.
Okay, it's the programming that I'm confused about.
I hear your concerns, and I don't know how to address your concerns right now.
Well, I have, may I ask a question of the Sheridans?
Ms. Sheridan, if you'll join us at the podium, that'd be great, so that those that are at home can hear you as well.
Thank you so much. As of this moment, did you envision hosting any kind of programming at the Performing Arts Center?
We have not gotten that far.
Okay.
We have just looked at the fact that we want a building. We have contacted nonprofits and find out what they wanted. We are bare bones, Commissioner, that we are building 20,000 square feet, and it's going to take money to go ahead and furnish it and finish it off acoustically sound. We have not given any thought to any programs. We haven't taken any preferential treatment to anybody. Patrice Floyd, we have a tremendous amount of respect for her. It goes back, a couple of years back, whenever we were exposed to what she's doing in our community is wonderful. And we are trying to build this at the Northwood Center, which is, it really does, it's in the heart of Tallahassee, and it is accessible to all four quadrants of Tallahassee. And that's the reason why we selected it. You've got transportation, you've got restaurants, you've got Ross School across the road, you have Ruder, Ruderger, you have Levy Park. We are not being preferential to anybody. I think we are, and if you know Mike Sheridan, he is an equal opportunity employer, and he is a civil rights fighter. And he would do anything he could to help our community and help children in the Tallahassee area. But, Commissioner, we just haven't gotten that far. We need to have a building. We need to have your approval. And if you would do that and let us get started, and we can get together and decide what we're going to do with this project. We don't even know what floor plans we're going to do. We haven't gotten plans. We don't have anything. But this is what we need from you. We need to have a location so we can get started.
All right. So, Commissioner, can I throw something on the table for consideration?
Which, which Commissioner?
Williams-Cox.
Yes, sir.
Hear you loud and clear. Agree 100%. I think that in talking to the city manager, we just give them the direction. Work with C O C A, identify every performing arts group that is physically located, and we can set the boundary. And we need to do a study of Smith Williams in our activation. If we have space available, yes, we should be doing that now. Not even with all due respect, as part of the Performing Arts Center, we should be doing that now regardless. And we can do that. We can do that by way of a motion separate. We can give direction. But what you're saying, we can do that now. And I think the city manager is, is ready and willing. We could move forward with option one and option two as presented and do a separate motion now. Move forward with activation of the space, working with every, I see our executive director of C O C A is here that I know would be more than willing to work with us. And if anything, it'd be great to have a roundtable discussion with those performing arts groups that are located on the South Side of how we could be better partners with the space that we have and available. I mean, thoughts?
And I appreciate that. And my question becomes, why hasn't that already been done?
I don't have an answer for you.
So we're here in a negotiation. And I'm not trying to be hard on those. I fully support. And I don't have a question for you. So you don't have to stand there for me. I just want to make sure that we don't miss an opportunity. I had another opportunity not too long ago to try to bring something to a community that has gone without, and that didn't work out. This is another attempt to say, as we are building our city, and we're looking at gaps in services, when there are opportunities to bring those online with other things that are going on, then we should always consider that. And so that's why I'm bringing it forward now, since we're talking performing arts. We're talking arts. We're talking culture. We're talking heritage. We're talking, this is the conversation. I don't want to leave this conversation with the promise that we're going to come back to it, and then we don't come back to it. Because I'm not, you know, I probably got some witnesses out here that this has happened before. And so I don't want to miss the opportunity. So if we want to move forward with option one and two and come back with another proposal or another suggestion, I just want us to do what we're going, say it and do it.
Sounds great. And I'm coming to Commissioner Mattlow in a second, then Commissioner Porter in just a second. And I think you're spot on. You know, having sat here and thought, I can only imagine that the global pandemic has played a role in the lack of activation because of our rules that we've had to put in place because of COVID. But let's look at it in a positive light, that as we are moving forward and reopening, we have this dynamic ability to sit down with C O C A, all of the performing arts groups, and truly paint a new day on how to move forward with the activation of our space. And I would be more than happy to come directly to you after the motion of option one, option two, frame the new motion as well, if that's all right with you, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
It's fine.
Excellent. Great. Okay, Commissioner Mattlow and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think I agree with everyone who's spoken, Commissioner Porter, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and Mayor Daly. I think where we're kind of having a disconnect is between physical space and then programming. Let's move forward with the physical space, but at the same time, declare, we want Smith Williams to be accessible for arts organizations. We want to make those partnerships. And before or at the same time that this art item comes back, we also have a plan in place to make Smith Williams available for arts programming. We have nonprofit partners or organizations that want to help us provide that programming and bring those back at the same time in March, when it comes back. So then, there's not a, we're putting this to the side. They're going to be on the same agenda item, and we'll both deliver a Performing Arts Center that the city has been asking for forever, and then also ensuring we have access to arts programming. Because I do think there are organizations that would step up and maybe some that would jump at the opportunity just to have access to the space if the city's making it available.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to offer to make a motion to, and I will allow Commissioner Williams-Cox to make her own motion, but I, as a show of support, I mean, I would be happy to make the motion that we bring back an item discussing what it would look like to have or with, you know, performing arts programming at Smith Williams. I mean, I'm totally committed to that. I want to see that happen. So, but I will, I will let Commissioner Williams-Cox make that motion.
Right, Mayor President.
Yeah, I would just remind us, I mean, I don't know where they are in the negotiations, but we're looking at a Performing Arts Center in Railroad Square that we have invested, or have committed to invest in as well. And so you're talking less than two miles from the Smith Williams Center to Railroad Square. So those opportunities would be available if that facility comes online as well.
Agreed.
Just something for us to consider.
Okay, so give you food for thought. After I take care of this motion, we're coming back to make sure that you have any clarification that you need on the next motion as well. But we're back on the original motion, which is staff recommendation of option number one and option number two. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, five zero. And now let me come back to Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
I offer the motion that we activate the space at Smith Williams, or access for the use of, for arts location and performing arts location and programming, that it, to make it accessible to all citizens, but especially those children on the South Side.
Second, Matt.
That's been signed by Commissioner Porter. All right. Any further discussion? Are you clear? We want, we want programming. We want activation. We want it used.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, I also caution with that, that we do not want to disconnect what will happen with the Performing Arts Center and the Northwood Center. This is not, this is not either or. This is just another location in our, in our city.
Absolutely.
Because I understand what you're saying. You're trying to get a building. But once you get the building, you're going to have to have some program, or you just got a building.
Correct.
So I know you're not there yet, but you're going to get there. And so when you get there, I want to make sure that on the front of our minds is access to our children on the South Side and the West Side, because I know Jimbo's probably, Commissioner Jimbo is probably watching, and the East Side and all sides. So thank you.
I think that that is a great point to keep in mind. And Commissioner Mattlow, you are, you are our representative on C O C A, correct? All right. So what I think is going to happen, Commissioner Williams-Cox, is that this is an incredible, very positive impact to our community, this Performing Arts Center. It is the proverbial boulder that's being thrown into the lake that will cause the ripple effect and will positively impact everything. I am sure that C O C A, as I'm looking at our representative and the executive director, will have many, many, many conversations, if not reshape the Performing Arts Plan of our community, if not, it will update it, correct? How do all of these organizations work together? How do they impact each other? Exactly what we're talking about now. So I'm also informally asking Kathleen, our good friend over at C O C A, it would be great if, you know, in the next, in the near future, if you could come individually, let's schedule time, and kind of bring us up to speed. I know that Commissioner Mattlow is extremely familiar with the C O C A Plan right now, but I think it would be good for all of us to have a refresher, not only of where we are with performing arts, but where we are going and how this also would positively impact us as well. That is outside of the motion, and I will look forward to supporting your motion as well. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, signed by Commissioner Porter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you all very much for coming and joining us this evening. On a final note, it was mentioned on this item, and I know that you all agree. And so let me stress, when we talk about the master plan for the Northwood Center, we're at the beginning. We've had one meeting. Like you, I was very excited to see 200 individuals show up in the rain and the cold. But I want to reassure the public, this is the first of many, many meetings, community town halls on the Northwood Center that will take place. And we look forward to taking a lot of public input. Okay, moving forward, we're on item number 13.02, the legislative update. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, while Christian is coming forward, I'd like to indicate, I think this, this commission has been committed, our leadership team has been committed to taking public input on any decisions that we make.
Correct.
And I think that we've demonstrated that. And so I just want those that are listening to know that that has been our modus operandi since this commission has been seated, and we will continue that. So I just want those that are listening, those that are here, to understand that that has been our modus operandi, and we will continue to use that in planning as we go forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, item number 13.02, the legislative update. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the, as we all know, the 2022 Florida Legislative Session has started. It's in its third week. It's an appropriate time to provide an update on where we are. Christian Doolin, our Director of Strategic Innovation, is here, and he's joined by Kirk Pepper from Gray Robinson, which is our lobbyist, supporting us on the matters. And so I'll turn it over to them for a quick presentation and look forward to your comments.
Yeah, thank you, Manager Goddard and Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to make this one quick. So the item has an overview of just a few items we're tracking, specifically some big issues focused on preemption of local government. It has an update on those. Some of those have changed since the publishing of the item, even as early as, or sorry, as recent as, you know, the beginning of this meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Kirk for a quick overview of some of those, some of those bills, what we're looking at, and of course, just a high, high-level overview of our three appropriations requests, and will be available for questions.
Thank you so much for joining us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Again, my name's Kirk Pepper. I'm with the Gray Robinson firm here right across the street. Like you said, we're in the third week of the legislative session. We're, you know, in a place where a lot of things are happening and starting to happen, and things are, issues are beginning to be worked out. We expect next week for the first, the initial drafts of subcommittee appropriations bills to come out. We've got two appropriations requests on behalf of the city that are positioned well. One is House Bill 4415, which is the Tempo Program sponsored by Representative Alexander. That, as you'll recall, was appropriated and approved by the governor last year. And that has been heard in its needed committee, and so we're working through that. Also, House Bill 9355, which is the Pump Station 12 overhaul, sponsored by Representative Jason Schoff, also been heard in the committee that it needed to, and we're working through that process as well. High level on policy. I know that you guys have watched a couple of the, specifically Senate bills that deal with business impacts in local governments, updates there. Senate Bill 280 has, and we've, in full disclosure, we also represent the League of Cities and have worked on these bills with them. Senate Bill 280 has been amended into a place that the League of Cities is actually now supportive of the bill. And, and we expect that bill to continue to move through the process in the House and the Senate pretty quietly at this point. And Senate Bill 620 is up on the floor of the Senate tomorrow. About an hour ago, while you guys were in this meeting, an amendment was filed by the bill sponsor that would move the League of Cities' position from opposition to neutral. They're not going to necessarily support it. Those are some big bills that I know that you guys have watched and heard about and been asked about. And there's been a lot of progress made on those in the last few weeks. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Open up for questions. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given, well, it's nice to see you. We haven't met before. I would, I know you're in the throes of session. I would love at some point to have a meeting with you or to be more engaged in what y'all are doing on our behalf, but I do thank you for that. I, you know, I have a comment which is just, I don't know what this, what, if any, position this puts you in, also representing the Florida League of Cities. And I know that usually we defer to the Florida League of Cities for the preemption stuff. I mean, I will say that personally, I am, you know, I sat in that session with Senate Bill 280, and even with the amendments, it sounded like an absolute nightmare to me. So, you know, I only have my own personal position, which is 100% opposed, but I guess, are you supporting 280? Are you lobbying with the, I know they have their own lobbyists. I mean, are you involved in that in any way, or you're just giving us the update?
I'm giving you an update.
Right, because you're doing more the appropriation stuff.
Yes, ma'am. Mostly appropriations on behalf of the city. We do, our firm does represent the League. We do work with the League. And, and we have given them a lot of advice about how to, how to get improvement from some people who are pretty dug in and pretty high in leadership. I think that things have improved a lot.
Yes.
The stated goal of both of those bills, specifically Senate Bill 280, is to give legislators a tool to not have to entertain so many preemption bills every session.
Right, which they don't have to do. We have, we are a home rule states in our constitution.
It's...
No one's making them do it.
Right. Right. But, but, you know, it's, I think things have gotten better. I don't think that anyone is saying that it's perfect.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So the action that we have before us is simply to accept the report. Kirk, I'd like to say thank you to you and your firm for representations to the Tallahassee. If there is one silver lining in this session with some of the legislation that's out there, I know that Senator Broder has filed a piece of legislation requiring all municipal governments to file full financial disclosure forms on an annual basis. And we are very proud to be either the first or one of the first municipalities that actually passed that in our Ethics Reform Bill three years ago. And so, you know, it has worked for us, and we're proud to be leaders on that, and fully hope that you will pass along to Senator Broder Tallahassee's story and how it has worked for us.
I will, I will. Speak to him frequently, and thank you guys for your trust.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for your hard work on our appropriations issue. We appreciate it. So again, the action is simply to accept the report. Is there a motion on the table?
I moved.
Mayor, you have one speaker.
I am so sorry, I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Sorry for the interruption, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, your name and address for the record, please.
I'd like for lobby also, take a look at voted protection. We've seen the erosion of voting and democracy all across this country, and especially here in Florida. I'd like for that to be back. Injustice, a threat to justice, injustice anywhere is a, is a threat to justice. As a black man, that's important to me. Another thing that I would like for you to place on your radar is that we are losing home rule. How we finance, how we control and operate our municipalities, our businesses, our police. There's one more other thing I'd like for you to put on your radar. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, but there is also a bill that's pending that if a small business loses more than 15% of its local revenue. These are the kind of things in times of a pandemic, and according to President Robertson at FAMU, heavily affect communities of poverty. So these are the issues that I'm concerned about as I live in this beautiful city of Tallahassee.
Motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter. Hold on, back up. Commissioner Porter, did you make a motion?
I did, but then we got interrupted, it never got a second.
Got it, all right. So Commissioner Porter has made the motion for staff recommendation, signed by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number 13.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This, this item seeks your approval on the establishment of a partnership between the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, TCC, and, and the City of Tallahassee's Tempo Program. We're seeking your approval to accept the sub grant of $50,000 that'll benefit Tempo, which will be administered through the chamber, and it, and its aim is for equitable credential attainment, which will be explained by Dr. Thomas. I'd like to also recognize who's in attendance. Sue Dick, President of the Chamber, is here in support. Sue, it's good to see you. And Sammy Dixon, the Chair of the Chamber and, and President of Prime Meridian Bank. And so I'd like, just to make sure everybody has a full overview of the program. We're excited about it. I think it, it speaks volumes about Tempo, but also about our business community and, and the way we're viewed around the country. I'd like Dr. Thomas to give a short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and to Mayor and the Commissioners. And I'd like for Chairman Dixon and President and CEO Dick to come join me at the podium, please. It speaks volumes to their commitment to these type of grants. There was a national RFP that went out to all chambers, and their commitment to the population that this particular grant serves, to the Luna Foundation. 86% of our Tempo participants fall within the targeted population of this grant. It will assist them in getting equitable credential attainment. This is a goal that also Governor DeSantis has with SAIL the 60 Initiative, that he wants at least 60% of Floridians to have equitable attainment credentials by 2030. It would give them jobs in the areas of technology, also commercial vehicle licensures, and also healthcare. And our population really strives in those areas. And I want to thank them for the outlook of that, the, the strong grant in the RFP that you submitted. I know Cory Melton did a lot with that. Katie Harwood led us the other day in our Zoom cohort meetings, because we have cohort meetings across the nation, and the other six particular municipalities that are part of this. And I just want to give away to Chairman Dixon and President Dick for any comments.
I just want to say, Commission, thank you all for allowing us here today, and it is an honor to be involved in this through the chamber with the City of Tallahassee and TCC.
Dr. Thomas, and thank you for calling out Cory Melton. She's actually watching us at home, and she's suffering from the COVID like I think many of our community is. But again, we could not have done this. You know, your chambers of commerce are charged with trying to go out and work in partnership, find grant dollars. I greatly appreciate the work of Cory Melton and our team. The American Association of Chamber Commerce Executives is preparing the grant, putting out the dollars. The American Association of Community Colleges are also involved. And, and really, we would not have gotten this grant for our community. And it's not we, the chambers, it's the community, without the community-based organization like Tempo. This was, this was the project, program, that is doing so much that really qualified us. And we should be very proud as a community, the fact that we're one of eight in the nation of seven, but one in the, the only one in the Southeast. And again, it goes to what TCC will bring to the table and what Tempo is doing, and the ability of Chamber of Commerce nationally to be putting out grant dollars for something as important as this. Thank you for your time, it's a pleasure to work with you, Dr. Thomas.
Now, I do apologize, I think I stepped out for just a second. I don't know if I missed it. Am I correct in understanding that you are one of six chambers of commerce across the nation that is receiving this, and the only chamber of commerce within the Southeastern United States?
One of seven, ma'am.
One of seven?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for your leadership on this issue, and we certainly do appreciate it.
And, and of course, you know, Mr. Dixon, it's no strange to us, he supports our TFLA program with the prime meridian effort that they give every summer for our youth employment.
Mr. Dixon, you are here, and I'm coming right to you in just a second. Mr. Dixon, you are here, not only in your capacity as the President of the Chamber, one of seven across the United States that received this grant, but also on behalf of your private bank that supports us year in and year out. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I do think we have some speakers, by the way.
Yeah.
One, so, okay.
Okay. Did every chamber have an opportunity to apply to this grant? Every established chamber in the nation had an opportunity to apply to this grant? And we were, and the Tallahassee Chamber was the only one in the southeastern United States to receive the grant? Okay. I, I, I want to commend the Chamber for taking this action and developing this partnership. I mentioned earlier that I've lived in Tallahassee for 40 years, so I know that history of the Tallahassee Chamber, and this is a sea change for the Tallahassee Chamber. I applaud the current leadership of the Chamber and the direction that it has taken to be, to reach farther out into the community, and to address issues in our community of this sort, and to develop those kinds of partnerships, because we're all in this together. And we've got to all continue to work together to make Tallahassee be the all-America city that she's twice been designated, not for certain sections of the community, but for our entire community. And we only do that through these kinds of partnerships. And so again, I commend the Chamber and the leadership for the sea change that you all are signaling, and the new direction that the Chamber is going, and all that you do for our community, our business community in particular. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go to our public comment, and then we'll come back for discussion. So, Mr. Clerk.
Yes. Stanley Sims speaking on this item, and is the only speaker I have unless someone else provides a card.
Great. Mr. Sims, name and address for the record, three minutes, please.
They can stand on up here with me if they want to. My name is Stanley Sims, I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm very happy to see this partnership with Tempo. I don't know if you all are aware, but this is the first time that Tempo has reported not 100% perfect ratings. It's dropped down to 93%. I don't know if you all are aware that the issues, it is our children on the street cries for these type partnerships. My child cried for this type partnership. My son is a part of that 7% that's not making it. My son is currently a five-and-a-half-year OPS city employee, who is now currently in Fire Night Academy School, and Tempo was not able to deliver him any services. Tempo did not get him a scholarship. Tempo has not yet find him a job that is suitable by the fire chief. The job that they matched my son, they wanted my son. Commissioner Cox, I really appreciate it. I don't get but three minutes, I'd appreciate some attention. Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Cox?
Mr. Sims, will you please?
These are my three minutes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cox?
Here in 30 seconds.
It's very painful when elected black officials won't even listen to you. We talk about slavery and the oppression of white people. But just because you in our skin don't make you our king.
Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Clerk, thank you. Let's go to discussion, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too want to congratulate the, the Greater Chamber for receiving this scholar, this grant. And I certainly don't want to rain on the parade, but I do have a few comments. I did, I would like to see, if possible, that we can include our minority chambers in some way in this. I did speak to them. It's of no fault of anyone's, they did not receive notice of this opportunity. So I would like to see them included in any way. I'm not gonna make a motion for that, but I know that they would like to. And of course, I'm really excited to see the work of Tempo being recognized on a national level. I think that's really exciting. So I, I did just want to say that. The last thing I wanted to say, and I, I feel almost like I should apologize for saying this, but I really feel this needs to be said. You know, as long as I've served on the commission, the Greater Chamber of Tallahassee has really operated more like a political entity than a business network, from my vantage point. It was only a few months ago that, at their chamber retreat, they were having speakers saying verbatim, "We need to get Jeremy Matlow out of office." There has been no apology for this. Other chambers do not operate this way. And I would really like to ask it of the leadership that we dial back the rhetoric so that this partnership, which is so important, can be productive, because I frankly find that inappropriate of our chamber, especially seeking a partnership with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommended option today for this incredible partnership, which we are so thankful for, is option number one. Any other public comment on this item?
Move option number one, Mr. Mayor.
Been a motion for option number one. I will second the motion and certainly do appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We're on item number 13.03. No, excuse me, 04.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let, let me tee this up, and if, if you don't mind, I'd like to just make some editorial comments about Tempo. So it was great news on the last item. I think we all know, we talk a lot about Tempo because we're proud of it, and we know it's making a difference. We now have approximately 1,600 disconnected youth in our community that are engaged with Tempo, almost directly at the hands of, of Dr. Kimball-Thomas. And we talked just at, at the retreat just a couple of weeks ago about picking up community partners and adding resources and momentum and inertia. And I think the last item and this item that I'll introduce reflect that. And so I appreciate you, you allowing me to make those comments because I think it's indicative of the direction. I think we have a model that works, we know it's needed in our community, and we'd like to continue to grow it. To that end, Mayor Commissioners, we're seeking your approval to establish another partnership with Goodwill Industries of the Big Ben for Tempo. This particular partnership, that, that I think that you guys know what it is for the benefit of the public, though, it is targeted at assisting formerly incarcerated youths in the age group of 18 to 24. The grant would be adequate for about 110, that's significant. And I'd like Dr. Thomas just to give an overview for everyone's benefit of how it would work.
And thank you, City Manager and Mayor and Commissioners. As of yesterday, with respect to the Ignite Program Grant, this is launched by Goodwill International, and it will give formerly incarcerated participants an opportunity to get training in the areas of healthcare, technology, commercial vehicle licensure. We have right now, in our database, 110 Tempo participants who have been formerly incarcerated. They have not re-offended since they've been in the program, and we're very excited about the training that they're going to get to go into a workforce, that they're gonna make a, a great living and be able to take care of their families and their responsibilities. And, and Goodwill looked out for us and asked us to be the anchor partner, because they believe in, again, what we're doing, and also it speaks volumes to what community partners can do for this program and helping assist in this program, and that the city is not the sole source of that supportive Tempo program.
Excellent, Mr. Manager, bringing in for a landing.
We're, we're asking your vote to approve this partnership.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Stanley Sims.
All right, Mr. Sims, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Also the only speaker on this item.
Okay.
I'm still at 1320. I want to clarify my comment. The Tempo Program is a very needed program here in Tallahassee. My concern about the Tempo Program is when elected officials choose and pick what services, what quality of service an individual gets, it's based on their parents' actions. From my view, using your words, Commissioner Porter, I think a current city employee should have had a better transitioning into the Tempo program than my son. I'm not here knocking this program. I applaud Mr. Kimball for his work, what he do. My issue of concern is, I think upper management is slighting my son on his rights and privileges to exercise and to benefit from this program because of his father's actions. And that's heartening, not just to me, but for him and his mother, who is also a city employee. It is also heartening that one, someone who is my friend, Commissioner Cox, could ignore my cry, just like you have, Mayor, for 16 months, and like you have, Reese, for 18 months, which has led to a highly exaggerated injunction that the judge threw out by one of your staff members, who was so felt so elite to tell, to tell the judge today in the injunction, these are my three minutes, I can speak on it, I'm talking about. I'm talking about Tempo.
No, we're talking about the Tempo program.
And we need to keep up the Tempo in the mayor's office because she said I was concerned that I was the help.
Please work with me on this. I'm asking you, please work with me.
And that's why I don't. And when we have seated in elected officials who consider citizens as the help, they need help from Tempo. They need Tempo. When you're poor and you don't have favor with the mayor, and you don't have favor with one of the commissioners that gave the city manager a perfect five score, they will take it out on your children and then try to take your freedom. But I'm glad that a conservative white judge today told your staff member, "You ain't that scared. It ain't over yet." I got a few more seconds there, John. Freedom is awesome here in America. This is not China. This is not Russia.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it, Mr. Sims.
I didn't hear what you said, Mayor.
I said, "Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Sims. We appreciate it."
One more time.
So do we have another speaker?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go into Commissioner's Discussion. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just first want to point out, we have Dr. Thomas on three items in a row.
Right.
Which I think it just speaks to, one, the pride we have and the work you're doing for the city of Tallahassee, but also the importance of connecting with our youth across our city. You know, Tempo has been a shining star. I think we all recognize him from the retreat on, from the retreat before that. We want to put the pedal to the metal and expand and reach as many youth as possible. But we are proud of your efforts, and it's great to see you here today. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to pile on about Tempo. We are picking up the Tempo, and as Dr. Thomas would say, and people are recognizing it. The chambers, all chambers are recognizing it, and I think all chambers are working together. And I'm glad to see how those, the three chambers are working together. So when one comes, they all come. And I know that they all support the Tempo project that we have here, because I know Ms. Tuggerson with Capitol City Chamber and Ms. Antonio Jefferson.
Correct.
With the Big Ben Minority Chamber, they are all on board with what we're doing here with Tempo. And I'm glad that you all chose the city of Tallahassee to be your partner. You didn't have to do that. You could have found another community project that you could have done this with. So thank you for considering this. And there's been great community conversation. We talked about it at the retreat, about what Tempo means in this community and how you impacted now 1,600 disconnected youth and how this program should be expanded. We have a homegrown success story, and it needs to be expanded with more staffing, more funding, and all of that. And I know that we have a legislative request. We received money last year, but we have a legislative request to ask for more this year. But I'd like to see this program continue to grow and continue to have more case managers because we're going to get more and more individuals. We now partner with Goodwill and bringing in those, some folks who have been previously incarcerated. We're just going to see this thing continue to grow. And Dr. Thomas, I want to just thank you personally because I know you that way. You were my son's high school principal way back when. And then you went over to East Gadsden and you worked over there. You have a special knack for the demographic of the individuals who this program serves. And I think they trust you, and that's why they're bringing their friends and they're getting people in places to be successful. So I would like to see this program continue to grow. Dr. Thomas, how much, how many more case managers do you need? Three? Well, I'll tell you what I'm going, how many you need? No, Dr. Thomas.
No, I will certainly, when we look at, as we continue to exponentiate the population I would get with staffing, and we'll look at how those manageable ones with respect to the different aspects of what we do. And we've got a restorative justice piece now, and so we'll look at those ratios and certainly I'll.
If I have to sell popcorn, bake a cake, brownies, or whatever to sell to make sure that that happens, I'm ready to do that.
Thank you.
Because it's really having an impact on poverty, which is what we say we want to do. And I want to make sure that we continue to do that. We saw the, what the sheriff said about the anatomy of homicide. We want to get to them before that happens. And so keep up what you're doing, and we got your back.
Thank you.
Is that a motion for option number one?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. It's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. A quick comment, very pleased to join the Mayor Pro Tim yesterday at the press conference with Goodwill Industries announcing the partnership, and just really excited. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Moving on, item number 13.05.
Mr. Mayor, last month, I received a letter from the county administrator on behalf of the Leon County Board of Commissioners. It was seeking the city's interest in participating on a newly created council on the status of men and boys. This item is before you tonight recommending that the city make a commitment to participate. The details are still forthcoming, actually, how it would work and any financial commitment in these kind of things. We will update you as that becomes available. At this time, we do recommend that you authorize us to participate on the council.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, our speakers, please.
Speakers on item 1305, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, name and address for the record, please. Three minutes, sir.
Still at 1320. I am really in support of this here. The city of Tallahassee did very good with the Women League. I'm not clear on the. Thank you, babe. And I'm very much and very much supportive of this here. We've had dialogue and conversation, even in community groups out in the community. There's a special need, and the report that Commissioner Cox referred, the sheriff's anatomy of homicide, clearly points to the areas. And we can go at this here strategically. So I ask each of you to offer your support in this initiative. I have two black sons, so this is personal.
Any other comment?
No additional speakers.
All right.
Move acceptance of this status.
Been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. I see her down there. Commissioner Porter, recognize for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You don't have to get up. I support this. I sat on the commission on the status of women and girls. I think that I'm really happy to see there be, and I know details are forthcoming, but there be this report that they're going to really be addressing. I think that's really helpful for a board. The only comment I have, and it's not a motion, it's just for your consideration, having sat on the commission on the status of women and girls with 21 members, I really found that and still find it to be way too big to really be a productive board. And so I, you know, I would like to see something that I think is a little bit smaller and focused, especially if it's going to be under sunshine. I find that to be a more constructive environment in these situations. But thank you for being a part of this.
Option number one's been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Item number 13.06. And again, colleagues, we have four more items under this particular session. It is 5:20 at 5:45. I'll check in, see where we are, and we'll go from there. Okay? All right, item number 13.06.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item provides an annual update on the impact of the city's code enforcement team as they continue to proactively serve our residents related to quality of life in our neighborhoods. This topic has been discussed amongst this commission. I think we've made progress. We've organized this agenda item and would like to update you on what progress we have made. The full report is in your agenda item, but I would like Director Ben Ojatayo to provide a brief overview of this.
Thank you.
Director Ojatayo, good to see you.
Good to see you all. Good evening.
Good evening.
And mayors, and thank you, City Manager, for the introduction. You have in your agenda packet what is now the second time we've provided an annual report on our code enforcement actions. It is probably one of the oldest functions of city government, and it is often overlooked, except for those neighbors who have real issues that they do not spare the opportunity to get in contact with us. And so we thought it'd be important, at least annually, to give you a sense of the overall program around code enforcement. It is a quasi-legal process that the city engages in. Some of you have served on our municipal code enforcement board with expert neighbors that provide counsel on how we resolve issues in our neighborhoods, as well as magistrates that provide oversight over the cases. But our code enforcement program is quite broad, and we really are excited about the direction we've taken with being more proactive, with engaging with our neighbors and with property owners, as well as enhancing the team and coming up with creative interventions that will help us combat chronic issues in our communities. Thanks to your ownership and throughout the past year, or actually two years, we've been able to enhance the team itself, to grow it, and to include code enforcement trainees. And since today seems to be the official Tempo Day, we've been very pleased to partner with them to also bring in trainees with graduates from the Tempo program. And that has been a tremendous asset to our efforts. You also approved our amnesty program last year, and we implemented that. And we were very pleased to see the response rate from property owners that were grateful to get that financial relief, but also to just have the opportunity to correct longstanding issues that have just been nagging them and nagging, quite frankly, our neighbors as well. So we appreciate that. You also took leadership on a graffiti to mural abatement program. You may not remember that, but we've been excited about partnering with folks like Coca and other local artists to turn often tagged graffiti walls to works of art. And we've done three of those so far. We did one with some of you commissioners that participated with girls in a summer camp. We've done one at the cemetery on Make Home, and we've just finished another one further south on Make Home to just beautify the area and point folks to an alternative way to revitalize our corridors. So you have a strategic priority to achieve more voluntary compliance. That's our goal. We want to see the number of cases go down. We want to see more proactive engagement, and we want to give property owners as many opportunities as possible to comply with the code so that we can really, truly improve the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I'm pleased to say that that is working. We have some long ways to go, of course, but we are all engaged. And I really want to thank the many, many departments in the city that work with us because no issue is really simple and requires only one officer. We often are working with beautification and waste management, with the city attorney's office, with legal issues, with communications to do a mural. I mean, it really takes a whole team, and I've been really proud of the way everybody has come around to support our neighborhood. So Commissioners, that is a brief overview of the update. You have the full report, gives you a day in the life of a couple of our officers and some highlights, as well as resources for neighborhoods to reference if they want to learn more about how they can support their community. Thank you, and I answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, our speakers.
On 1306, we have Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vena, I want to tell you, this is, Commissioner Richardson, this is another area where this young lady has excelled. The code enforcement, I don't know if you remember, many years ago, I was in that department to help clean up, bring some of those properties in compliance. And I think that the key to her success is, he has empowered her employees to think outside the box, and she has diversified code enforcement officers throughout all of her department. And the efficiency in which they work and has reduced the stress comes out in the project. Commissioner Richardson, I ride down that main street they own in Frenchtown. I don't have the trash. And I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Reginald Finney and to the supervisor there, Mike, who does that main corridor because of the heavy trash. And also, I go to those majesties here. Commissioner Richardson, it's not about, she has changed the decorum of that room. It's not just to give a fine, but it's to find a resolution and educate the person. Well, they sometimes go a little low, but education is the key and not the fine. And I'm just deliciously proud of any time that I can see someone of your stature raised to the calamity. And she is another. When I see her, she don't avoid me. When I call, she answers. And because of that, I don't hardly bother you anymore, do I? But I'm bothering her staff. But the staff gives me the answers. When I say, "Miss Mary got this letter," I've got someone to go to. Relationships matter. It's not whether if you like the person, but it's about relationships. And I'm very, Tallahassee is very proud to have someone like that of her statue. And I'm going to borrow the words of Officer Britt, who is the mental illness. Everyone can't do her job. But I'm very thankful tonight that Tallahassee got her doing this job.
Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker on this item.
All right. Is there a motion for option number one?
No move.
Second.
Been probably moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment?
Question.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Question, is this, this is available online at talgo.com?
Yes, it is. And we have a couple of physical copies in our office as well.
Okay. I want to make sure that residents know that they can go out and take a look at this. This is a very good report.
Thank you.
And I think we should pay close attention to it.
Thank you.
Question's been made by Commissioner Williams-Cox for approval. Option number one, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.07. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last couple of years, TPD has collaborated with the Leon County Sheriff's Office, the FSU Police Department, FSU College of Criminology to establish a real-time crime center. As the name suggests, it's rooted in technology and using information to solve crimes and hopefully prevent crimes. There has been a grant of about $500,000 that we're seeking your approval to accept the city's share, which is approximately $121,000. And that's what this item seeks to do tonight. With that, though, I think it would be appropriate to have Deputy Chief Larson come forward and just share how the real-time crime center works, you know, what it's about, and really how it benefits the community.
D.C. Larson, thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. A real-time crime center in and of itself is a 24/7 operation, which helps officers and deputies on calls for service with a myriad of different intelligence information or technology information that are at their disposal. It helps imagine a call for service coming in, and as the call is happening, there is someone at a station that can look at a GIS map and figure out where the public safety cameras are that are around that area, or possible license plate readers that are around that area, and provide that information to the officers or deputies that are responding. In and of itself, that can help with information leads that happened that night. So instead of taking a day or a week, this can take minutes or an hours to help solve a crime. As a department, with support from the city, we have developed a really robust infrastructure of public safety cameras, along with license plate readers around the city. And working in those neighborhoods through the Neighborhood Public Safety Initiative, we partner with those neighborhoods and place the cameras where they're needed in those neighborhoods that have the most impact for crime. Currently, we have 19 different locations around the city that have public safety cameras installed, and we are going to move forward in the Providence neighborhood in the near future. With license plate readers, we have nine fixed locations that have license plate readers out right now. Those systems have provided a huge investigative benefit for us. As a department, they've helped solve carjackings, homicides, bank robberies, any, a myriad of different calls, along with auto theft recoveries and with those stolen guns. We know that this has a big impact on crime. We began to work towards an RTCC. LCSO had theirs stood up, I want to say around 2017, 2018. And with Florida State University, they kind of gave us a place, a centralized location that could be used where FSUPD, LCSO, TPD could all be co-located. that could be used where FSUPD, LCSO, TPD could all be co-located. We could then, again, in support of each other, work collaboratively and share our resources that we all have as agencies. And that helps the efficiency and effectiveness with those technologies and passing them on to the officers and deputies that need them. The other interesting part of this grant itself is that part of the grant is going to FSU School of Criminology, and with that School of Criminology and Public Policy Research, they are going to actually review what all the agencies are doing. And in doing that, that helps us develop evidence-based policing strategies that are here really just for our location. We can go onto BJA websites and DOJ websites and see what best strategies may be out there that have worked in Cleveland or Chicago, but they may not work here. With FSU School, they will actually look at our information and help with the research component and develop our own, which is a phenomenal resource for us. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item? Mr. Clerk.
We do have one speaker, Jeremy Block.
Block, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Block, 1109 East 6th Avenue. And, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for being here. This is an item that I wanted to address, not so much for its heart, but for the spinoff things. It's always wonderful for a city commission to discover something that isn't going to cost them anything, and that's exactly what this does. And it's a spectacular program, especially if you're into all the IT stuff that is now taking over the community, but this is very positive. My problem with keeping to finance these things is there is an attitude with our police department, especially in Leon County, that what are we doing to prevent crime? This is all reactive, and it's going to be another statistical study. It's going to be this thick. You're going to read the conclusion and move on. I feel very strongly at this point, especially in light of the fact that there have been 10 shootings in our town since January 1. Positively, there have been three deaths and seven injuries. I want a gun buyback program initiated. I've done a bit of research. They've had a very successful one in Gainesville as recently as this past November, and it's a tool that I think law enforcement can use very effectively. They were able to, you know, get 53 weapons off the street in four hours. There is a program currently in place in Leon County in connection with Crime Stoppers. If you have a weapon that turns out to have been stolen, Crime Stoppers will accept that information and your anonymity, and you can be awarded up to $1,000. I'm not advocating something that extreme for the city of Tallahassee, but I think we could raise enough money and get enough influence to get some guns off the street. And it's a hard thing to track. Statistically, it's hard to write a statistical analysis of something that hasn't happened. And that's basically what I'm saying.
You're at about 30 seconds.
But if we can get any number of weapons off the street with a gun buyback program, it's wonderful. And I just want to acknowledge TPD, because they've instituted, they've been able to get 568 weapons off the street this past year through their usual patrol and arresting and so on and so forth. But I think we can make a dent in that that will be extremely positive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
No other speakers on this item.
Excellent. Commissioners.
Move, accept, one. Staff recommendation.
Mayor pro temp has properly moved. Option number one, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Any further comment? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that I am excited to see the results of this. I think this is a really interesting collaboration, and I hope that it's a really fruitful experience that is going to inform and better equip us moving forward. So I appreciate you reaching out to form this partnership. Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.08. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this item seeks your approval to authorize the city manager, my design, need to execute an interlocal agreement with Leon County for debris removal after a catastrophic event. This is an area where we have found great success, where our community of beautification and waste management department, along with our procurement department, have generally been ahead of the game. I think we can recall Hurricane Irma that impacted almost the entire state of Florida.
Yep.
And it created a demand and excess, far an excessive supply of these kinds of providers. We had contracts in place. We were able to have the resources here to address our needs in our community, and we've seen it time and time again. Hurricane Michael is another good example. In this case, we know, we share the same contractor with Leon County, and in order to have an administrative efficiently, efficient mechanism in place, if there's any billing discrepancies related to where the debris is picked up, this allows us to do that. Reginald Fani is the general manager of that area. He's available to answer any questions you have, and we're seeking your approval tonight.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, speakers.
I have no speakers on this item.
Excellent. I would like to say excellent work. I was on the county side when the hurricanes came through. I saw those municipalities in South Florida that did not negotiate before hurricane season their debris removal. I remember, just like you do, the incredible price wars that were going on that cost taxpayers in those communities a lot of money. This is the type of forward thinking before hurricane season that truly helps out the community. Job well done. Any other comments? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the item on the table, but I do want to, you know, highlight the fact that the issues we had after Hurricane Michael were contractors trying to force bills on us for work that they did outside of, for what they picked up in the county and that sort of thing. And that was an unfortunate situation, and I think of how they responded to that billing situation and didn't really do, didn't really try to act in how do we resolve this in a better way. So I just hope, you know, as we work with contractors in the future, you know, we hold them to the high standards and what our agreements are. But I do agree that, you know, this action can help alleviate some of those concerns in the future. Thank you.
Mayor pro temp, is that a motion for staff recommendation?
Move, option number one, staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor pro temp has made recommendation, the motion for staff recommendation, option number one. I will second it. Is there any other comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes, five zero. 13.09, shall we go ahead and move forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on just a second. Should we go ahead and move forward?
Yes.
Or take a break? I'm seeing one of each.
I would take a break.
Let's go. This is the last item?
This is the last item.
I said, let's do it.
I'll tell you what, Commissioner Porter, I promise you, we will take a break before we go into the public hearing, okay? All right.
Mr. Mayor, any other?
Move forward, 13.09. Yes, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to recuse myself from this item. I think we all received an email in October that I think was sent to all of our aides, as well as the press and the ethics officer alleging an ethics complaint in reference to a CRA vote on paving a parking lot across from one of my businesses. We also saw the statement Mayor Daley released last week. So because the complaint hasn't been disposed of yet, and the class includes us, in consultation with the attorney, it appears to have been a voting conflict, so I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Commissioner Matlow has recused himself. Let's move forward. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.09 is an opinion by the city attorney involving the Independent Ethics Board's jurisdiction concerning outside agencies. On November 16, 2021, the City of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board's council provided a legal opinion to the board's chair on the jurisdiction of the board over the CRA and Blueprint Agency as to board members and staff. By letter dated November 23, 2021, the board chair requested that the city commissioner respond on the stated issues. This agenda item provides the city commission, the city attorney's legal opinion on the jurisdictional issues, whether the board has jurisdiction over an advisory board or a local government agency and its employees determined by a city ordinance, the city charter, state law, or the respective creating interlocal agreement. The city charter, section 61, specifically provides for the board's jurisdiction over City of Tallahassee boards, commissions, and committees. As stated in the city charter, section 61, the jurisdiction of the ethics board is limited to officers and employees of the City of Tallahassee and members, officers, and employees of the City of Tallahassee boards, commissions, and committees. Thus, in my opinion, unless passed by referendum of the voters pursuant to Florida statute section 166.031, this jurisdiction cannot be expanded by either the city commission or the Independent Ethics Board. Both Blueprint and CRA are independent legal entities. Their board members and employees are not subject to the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board. However, the law is abundantly clear that all Florida government officials, officers, and employees are subject to the Florida's Ethics Code contained in chapter 112. Florida statutes, chapter 163, provides that both the CRA and Blueprint Agency are separate and independent legal entities. With regard to commissioners, jurisdiction is dependent on whether the ethics complaint is based on the actions as the city commissioner or as an official for a separate entity. Additionally, both the CRA and Blueprint have the authority to hire their own employees under Florida law and have done so. Entering into agreements with the City of Tallahassee to provide for benefit administration does not convert these separate local legal entities' employees into City of Tallahassee employees. In a recent City of Tallahassee decision regarding another interlocal agency, the circuit court determined that chapter 163 agency employees were not city employee. An accepted principle of statutory construction is that where a constitutional charter or statutory provision enumerates a thing or things on which it operates, and in this case, City of Tallahassee employees and officials and committees thereof, it is ordinarily construed as excluding from its operation all those things not expressly mentioned. Additionally, I note with other Florida government's ethics codes, jurisdiction of autonomous policymaking personnel or independent agencies or districts is specifically stated. Based on the application of this principle, together with the clarity in other non-city ethics codes, the lack of legislative history reflecting an intent to include independent legal entities in the plain text of the charter, it is my opinion that neither board members of these entities functioning in their capacity as board members nor their employees are within the jurisdiction of the City of Tallahassee Independent Ethics Board. In conclusion, in my opinion, until legislatively or judicially determined otherwise, city commissioners serving in the capacity of board members of Blueprint and CRA and the CRA and employees of Blueprint and the CRA are not subject to the Independent Ethics Board's jurisdiction and cannot be made subject there, and can be made subject thereto only by referendum of the electors. It is important for many legal reasons to recognize the separate legal status of these entities. Recommended action is option one, accept and approve the city attorney's opinion as the city's position on the jurisdiction of the ethics board.
Do we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, sir, we do. We have two speakers, both in person. The first is Stanley Sims, followed by Margaret Moore.
Okay. Mr. Sims, your name and address, three minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really know how to do that. I'm just, I'm trying to get a little clarity on your opinion. And so, I'm still at 1320. So, Madam Attorney, if my memory serves correct, when you got this position, you were number seven in the country, so I'm not finna challenge you on your opinion, but I'm just asking for some clarity. Now, when you say they're not subject to the independent ethics, my question then, who are they subject to? And with the CRA, if a complaint is foul, how is that handled? And if they're not, and I might be bumbling, but I'm, let me say it this way, and if I interpret what you said wrong, I appreciate in your response, just clearing. I'm understanding that they have no oversight other than the commissioners, and I'm also understanding that there is not a complaint process for these two entities. I won't take all of my time, but those, something I would need clarity on.
Madam Attorney.
Certainly, Mayor pro temp. So they are accountable to the people to be ethical when they're functioning as members of the CRA, as well as the employees of the CRA or Blueprint. But because they are not within the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Board, when functioning as members of the CRA or Blueprint, they are accountable by way of the state ethics commission. So any, if there is a complaint regarding misuse of position related to their, while functioning as, then you go to the state ethics commission.
Okay, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Margaret Moore.
Margaret.
Mayor pro temp, that's the only other speaker we have on this item.
All right. Thank you, sir. Margaret, if you could give us your name and address for the record, please. You'll have three minutes.
Yes, sir. I'm Margaret Moore, 1910, Monticello Drive. Can you hear me okay? I just wanted to read a letter that Mayor Daley sent in response to the Ethics Board inquiry. The public's trust has been violated over recent years, and I take seriously my role as mayor to help restore public trust in our government. Any attempt to limit the Independent Ethics Board's jurisdiction over city commission members of Blueprint and the CRA would further erode public trust, and I will not support any such attempt. I agree with you. I don't get to say that very often, so thank you. I do believe that we would be failing our voters and the constituents who voted for this if we were to fail to cover everyone under the ethics board. So I hope that everyone read that letter that Mayor Daley sent and will heed that as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
That's.
No further speakers. Okay.
Who's the last speaker?
Let's go ahead and open it up for a commission discussion. Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Move, acceptance of option number one.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved for acceptance of option number one. Option number two, open it up for discussion. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that this item is coming for us, because clearly we need clarity on this issue. I want to be clear that I'm happy to expand the jurisdiction of the ethics board. I'm happy to take up any ethics issue. I look forward to having a more in-depth discussion about ethics in general at our upcoming workshop. However, I do agree with our city attorney's interpretation as far as what we, what was passed by the voters. I would be happy to make a motion to move forward with whatever action that's necessary to expand it, but I do think it's a dangerous precedent for us to set, for us to enter, you know, enter in and say otherwise. I mean, it makes me think of what, how the legislature responded to the Restoration Rights Amendment, to totally reinterpret it after the fact. So that is where I stand right now, but I definitely don't want this to become an issue that is framed as if you either support ethics or you don't, because I don't see that as being the issue here. So I'm happy for more discussion, but that's where I'm at right now.
Excellent. Let me put my comments into the record, and I'm not trying to convince anybody to change their mind. I'm just stating my opinion, and we'll take a vote, and I think it'll be a 3-1 vote, because I do not support the city attorney's interpretation of the charter, and I do not agree with her interpretation of the charter respectfully. The charter speaks specifically that the ethics board does have jurisdiction over the elected officials, the officers. I do not participate on the city, nor does anybody. We do not act differently on the city commission than we do on the CRA or on Blueprint. The standard should be the same. In the charter, my interpretation and those attorneys that I have spoken with support that, okay? And so... And so, it would be an expansion of the charter that would have to go before the citizens if it was to include staff or members of the county commission for the point of Blueprint. That is not what my position is. My position is solely us as elected officials. I only serve on the CRA because I'm an elected member of this board. I only serve on Blueprint because I'm a member of this board. For those of you that also serve on CRTPA, you are only on that board because you are first and elected member of the city commission. Plus precedent has been set in my mind. You know, not too long ago, I had an ethics complaint that was filed against me. It was by actions taken as a member of the CRA. It went through the entire process. I prevailed, and in fact, the City of Tallahassee reimbursed all costs associated with that process, but it was filed based on the perceived action that I took as a member of CRA. The attorney's office was silent, manager's office was silent, inspector general's office was silent. In my mind, precedent has been set. So, I am, as I have stated in writing, in full support of the Ethics Board, having jurisdiction over our actions if something has been filed, not staff, not the county commission. That would require charter referendum to expand, and it's jurisdictional issues anyway. We couldn't do the county commission. But my interpretation, and based on the precedent that I believe has already been set, I am comfortable. So, here's where we are. We're gonna take a vote, and let's just take a vote, and it's gonna be 3-1. It is interesting that the Ethics Board has simply asked for our opinion. I don't know how this actually plays out. It'll be interesting to hear from the Ethics Board what they decide to do. Sure. But I do want to state for the record that I will not support the motion on the table. We'll go to Commissioner Porter. I had the Mayor Pro Tim first, and then we'll come down to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm gonna be brief, but we respect your opinion.
Sure.
But yours is just that, an opinion.
Sure.
It's not based on law or legalities. We have an attorney and staff that we pay full time to give us advice, legal advice on these issues, and I happen to agree with the opinion of our attorney. There is a remedy in the event of an ethics violation in our role as a board member of the CRA and Blueprint. We've seen examples of that in the recent past where city staff have had complaints filed with the State Ethics Commission and action was taken. I think if, in your case, if you had objected to the local Ethics Board hearing that case, then certainly it would have gone to the State Ethics Commission. But I think in this case, I agree with the attorney's position. I think it is the right position for us to take, and I'm comfortable with the fact that in our separate roles, regardless of how we got there, in the attorney's legal position, that we would, in those cases, if an ethics complaint was filed, it would be filed at the State Ethics Commission.
Understood. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would second what Commissioner Richardson just said. And even in your own case, I mean, it was, my understanding, and even in what was argued by your own attorney, was not really focused around the CRA, it was focused around your role as the mayor. So, you know, I think that complaint could have been brought forward, although, of course, that it was dismissed, in either case.
No, let me go ahead and correct you. It was based specifically on a vote that was taken at the CRA. It was before you were on the CRA with us.
I know, thank you. But I'm curious who you spoke to as far as your attorneys, because I spoke to a bunch of attorneys too, and they agreed 100% with our city attorney. Thank you.
That's great. All right, motions on the table by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Porter for the city attorney's, I'm sorry, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I made the motion.
She made the motion.
I'm all confused. You made the motion, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Okay, excellent. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. Passes 3-1 with the mayor in dissent. Commissioner Matlow recused himself from pending ethics complaint. It is 5:56. We will take a five-minute quick recess, come back at 6 o'clock. We have one item on the public hearing. Hey, good job, everybody. We got through general business.
I know.
Let me call on the city attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 21-0-33 and ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending chapters 1, 9, and 10 of the Land Development Code, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 21-0-33. Ordinance number 21-0-33 referred to as the Glitch Ordinance is designed to fine-tune the Tallahassee Land Development Code by identifying parts of the code that are not currently working as originally intended and proposing ways to fix it. Glitch ordinance includes 22 proposed changes to the zoning code. Changes address implementation problems with the existing zoning code and update the code to better reflect the priorities of the community as identified through five public hearings.
Excellent. Let's move into public comment. Ms. Clark, how many speakers do we have tonight on the public hearing?
On the public hearing item, we have two individuals in person and two had connected via WebEx. There may be a third who connected during our break.
All right, let's begin.
The first speaker, and we'll take the in-person speakers first, is Jake Varne, followed by Richard D'Araby. As with the other part of, earlier part of our meeting, each speaker will have three minutes.
Mr. Varne, so good to see you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for joining us.
Members of the commission, I'll be brief. I was appointed by mayor and this commission as being the chairman, I mean, actually, I wasn't appointed as the chairman. I was appointed as a member of the Midtown Stakeholders Committee, which we were supposed to be doing a, we are doing a master plan, making recommendations to you for the Midtown Master Plan. And my concern is that this Glitch Ordinance proposes some changes to the Midtown area, and none of these changes were, I was even aware of until like two days ago. Seems to me that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and it seems to me that what you're doing in the Midtown should be something that's dealt with by our committee, which we are doing very well with, we're making good progress. I can tell you this whole issue that's before you and that's included, not been brought up, and I've been working with this group. I mean, we were officially put together maybe a year ago, but in the three years, this issue has never arisen. And so, you know, if you wanted to address, I would respectfully suggest that you ask that our committee include that in the recommendations that we'll be bringing to you, whether or not we should do this, and leave it at that, because otherwise, I mean, otherwise, we're dealing with a moving target, and that's the part that bothered me the most, that we weren't consulted in any way about this, not made aware of it, and we've tried to keep up with everything affecting Midtown, and this was never, had never been brought to our attention. And so, for that reason, I wish you'd kind of leave things as they are as it relates to Midtown. I would also, since I'm here and have a moment, one of the most current topic we have is that in the coming months, we know you're gonna be repaving, not you, but there's gonna be a repavement of Thomasville Road, and that hot button in the business community, the fact that they want to make sure that the utilities are gonna go underground, which the way the design has been made, and I want to make, we want to make sure, we want to give much support for that as we possibly can. I know that DOT is the ultimate decider, but we didn't want there to be any mistake. It's where our committee stood, and so, this is affording me the opportunity to comment on that while I'm here, so I thought I would. I thank you very much, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to respond to them.
Yes, sir. Mr. Varne, first of all, you've had an absolutely spectacular career on the state level. Thank you very much. So, if I'm understanding you correctly, you would like for us to consider voting this item down, because it's a public hearing, and we'd have to either go up or down tonight, but voting it down, not because we don't eventually want it, but because the working group hasn't had the opportunity to consider this, so that this could possibly come back to us in the future and begin the public hearing process again, because that's what would happen, right? If we voted it down and it came back, it would have to go through the process again? Okay.
I'll be very specific.
Yes, sir.
If you look on page 2 of 46, under section 10.430, par. A, at line 74, it says, "Transfer of development rights and trees," and the first sentence says, "This section does not apply in that area highlighted by the figure below entitled 'exempt area.'" And if you look at the exempt area map, which is shown on page 8 of 46, you will see that the area of Midtown along Monroe Street is not in this.
Correct.
All the other area of Midtown is. And as I said, we just haven't heard that issue or dealt with it, and since it is gonna impact our Midtown area, I would prefer that that whole area be exempt until our committee finishes our work on the master plan and brings the recommendation to you.
You are, and I'm looking at the attorney as well, he is correct in that interpretation that all of Midtown is being removed out of the canopy tree protection if this passes, correct?
I think it'd probably be better for Karen to address that, but, because I'm not as familiar with the map.
If you look at the map, which is on page 8, it does exempt what I would describe as the vast majority of Midtown.
Yes, yes.
And it's got an area along Monroe Street.
Yes, sir.
That will be part of the area affected by the ordinance as it's proposed. And all I'm saying is, it would seem to me that if you want our committee to look at that issue, which we haven't been asked to do, and we should, because it's gonna affect the master plan, then this map should include all of the Midtown area as opposed to these two parts, or you should not exempt from it, Monroe Street portion of it.
Good point. Dr. Jummerville, you want to jump in?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd be happy to. I can clarify this point, that the Glitch does create renewed incentives for developers to preserve trees more than what the current code requires. They provide an incentive for a developer to preserve trees if they're in the buildable area that the developer could otherwise build in. As an incentive for that tree preservation, we allow them to either build up one story higher than what the zoning code would allow, or they could transfer that development right to another parcel. So, it's an incentive to preserve additional trees. We heard from the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association and ATN throughout the robust public engagement process that we had, over five public meetings on the topic, and they felt very strongly that Midtown should be exempted from that incentive program. They did not support the additional height in their neighborhood, and they felt that the Midtown Working Group should get a chance to weigh in on this issue. We typically would not support an exemption and a carve-out area.
Right.
It was not in the original draft that we provided, but after extensive discussion with the neighborhood groups and in deference to them, we did agree to a compromise where we exempted the vast majority of the Midtown neighborhood, but we did feel strongly that the parcels that front along Monroe should be entitled to that additional tree protection incentive and that the additional height would be appropriate. So, that's what's in the document that's before you today.
All right, Dr. Jummerville, we'll probably have more questions after public comments, so stick around, okay?
Happy to answer them.
Mr. Varne, did that at least answer the clarification you were looking for?
Well, I understand what you said.
Yes, sir.
You're getting into the weeds, if you will, and all I'm saying is that this issue, I thought more appropriately should be dealt with Midtown Stakeholders Committee as opposed to some other group, and we haven't played. Incidentally, at our February 7th meeting, we've invited all the business community to address this, as we've already got a draft of priorities, but they're gonna come and tell us what their issues are, so we'll have an opportunity for this to be addressed by the whole business community on February 7th. Thank you, and I'll be glad to respond to any questions.
Thanks for serving on the working group. Okay, Mr. Clark, our next speaker.
Richard D'Araby.
D'Araby, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, sir, three minutes.
Thank you, Richard D'Araby, 805 North Gadsden Street. I've been here a few times on the Glitch Ordinance, you may recall. Here on behalf of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, my role as a chair of a committee last year had me engaging diligently with staff on the creation of the Glitch through all of the public hearings. So, first compliments to staff, Karen and her team, tremendous job balancing a lot of different opinions, obviously hard to reach consensus. They just did a great job, so I need to start off with that. Came to speak exactly about the topic that was just discussed, it's the exemption of carve-out in Midtown. So, we feel carving out anything out of the ordinance or carving out any section of town sets a bad precedent. We don't feel that there should be any carve-out, especially for an incentive program that could potentially save trees. So, we're not creating high rises in Midtown. It's a potential to add one story, and the trade-off is saving trees. And if we start carving out certain neighborhoods from certain ordinances, it could lead to other carve-outs for other neighborhoods and all these future ordinances that may come before this commission. So, it's a dangerous precedent, just want to go on record that we are against the carve-out. If the Midtown Stakeholder Group and Midtown Master Plan need to be engaged to figure out what they want to do within Midtown, there could be another process to adjust the text within the Glitch to do things. I mean, if we accepted the Glitch without the carve-out, and you have that power to do that tonight, as you know, we could come back after the Midtown Master Plan and further adjust code as needed based on those things. But carving out Midtown right now just seems like a bad precedent, and we hope that you would consider taking out that exemption as you adopt the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, can we do that? I thought it was an up or down vote tonight.
No, generally, the case law is that if it's not a substantial revision of the ordinance, you can make an adjustment. This issue has been substantially vetted with the public and based on the size of the ordinance and all the things it does, I don't think, either way you go, it's gonna be a substantial change.
Okay. All right, Mr. Clark, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Jeff Blair. There'll be a WebEx connection.
Mr. Blair.
And followed there by Kathy McGuire.
Great. Mr. Blair, are you with us? Mr. Blair? Ms. McGuire?
I believe he's disconnected.
Okay. Ms. McGuire, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Ms. McGuire, thanks for sticking around. Your name and address for the record, please, three minutes.
My name is Kathy McGuire. I live at 1101 Pine Street. I'm the chair of the Alliance Tallahassee Neighborhoods. ATN has two requests tonight, to keep the Midtown exclusion but at Monroe Street, and to delete language that allows standalone garages outside of downtown. First, please keep the Midtown TDR exemption, a policy no one complained about at any of the five public workshops, and that the Planning Commission did not object to. Let's keep the exemption and revise the map to include Monroe Street 2, since that's where the pressure lies, until the Midtown Working Group completes its plan. You appointed these business owners and neighbors to together design Midtown's future while retaining its unique character, and they're actively working on it. That's why we need to keep the exemption from the TDR Transfer of Development Rights on page 8. Yes, the intent of TDR is to save trees, since our tree ordinance is too weak to do so. But TDR transfers our incentives that increase density or intensity, even adding another story to a building on top of the maximum allowed. If the concern is that more people will ask for carve-outs, maybe that's an indication that TDR is not gonna be such a popular policy. Midtown is not downtown. After session or 5 o'clock, high-rise downtown is a ghost town. In contrast, Midtown stays active with people walking with their dogs, their babies, their friends, because the human scale is appealing and interactive. Businesses forced to close by the pandemic there are coming back because it's a great place to do business. Why interfere with success? Why interfere with the working group? Second, please delete the language on page 26 that allows standalone garages outside of downtown. Currently, such garages must have a business front called a liner. Glitch allows a public area, a mural or a green wall instead of a liner. We don't think murals and walls are an adequate substitute or is viable over the long haul. We don't think murals and walls are an adequate substitute or is viable over the long haul, as they will deteriorate if they're not maintained, especially by a subsequent owner. Business liners, on the other hand, keep the area lively, safe, and cared for. They aren't passive dead zones. They're magnets that create interaction with the street, draw customers, and engage walkers. In closing, please keep the Midtown TDR exclusion on page 8 but at Monroe Street, and please delete language on page 26 that allows standalone garages outside of downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor Max Epstein has registered. I don't know if he connected to the meeting, but he would be the only other speaker we have.
Mr. Epstein, are you with us, sir? Mr. Epstein, are you with us?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Blair, have you come back to join us? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Mr. Epstein contacted my office today, and Karen spoke with him. I don't know if you want to share what his concerns were and how you were able to respond to him.
Sure, Commissioner, I'd be happy to. Mr. Epstein was concerned about the standards in our current environmental management ordinance. He did not feel that the tree protection requirements are stringent enough, but we explained that this ordinance, at least from the staff perspective, moves the ball further down the field in terms of tree protection, which was his goal. He did feel that, he said that he supported it, but also felt that we should go farther and really take a good look at Chapter 5 and our tree protection regulations and enhance them, and was looking forward to that process happening at some point in the future.
And thank you for speaking with him. I'll add to that, that I did speak with him as well, and he appreciated Karen's response, but he also wanted to know, wasn't it time for us to address the tree ordinance, and also wanted to know where we were in regards to the Urban Forest Master Plan? So I just wanted to put his questions and concerns there, since he's not able to be with us tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we have no more public comment. So let's turn to Commission Discussion Questions. Mayor Protem.
I guess the question that I would have for the attorney, Madam Attorney, what are we able to, I don't feel comfortable with this policymaking on the fly, with people coming to the rostrum and suggesting things for us to do, and we're changing policy on the fly like this. I'm just not comfortable with it. So where does that leave us?
As I explained to the mayor, essentially, it's a determination of whether it's a substantial change. With an ordinance of this size, with so many different facets, changing one or two things, it's not going to be a substantial change of the ordinance. It has been, as I understand, at least the issue regarding the preservation of trees is something that's been in the community, been debated and discussed. It was several different approaches were placed in the agenda items, so there's plenty of notice about it. So in my mind, that one in particular is not a substantial change. As to the other item regarding whether or not, I think it was having a separate, not having a not attached garage, standalone garage, that issue, it does sound substantial to me, because it seems it's going to apply throughout, and it's not just about one little area. In my mind, that probably would require re-noticing of the ordinance.
And how about the exemption?
Exemption, no. I think you have all but everything before you. You've heard from folks about it. It's been out in the community, fully vetted. It's been examined back and forth in the agenda item itself. So in my mind, that is not a substantial change.
So then, if we were to consider re-noticing, what would that take?
You simply have to, you could even really continue this hearing, but the issue is, you'll be back on the same one, so you will have to re-notice it completely. If you change it, give direction tonight, policy direction about what you would like to see, then you would totally re-notice the ordinance.
And that's what I was trying to get to. How do we move forward?
Yes, that is how you would move forward on that.
So we would have to, there would have to be a motion to change the item, as has been requested. If that's successful, then we re-notice the ordinance, and it would come back to us for a final vote.
That's correct.
All right. So I guess what I'd like to know is, what are all the changes that we're being asked to consider making tonight? I know the, Karen, if you could address that, that would help us.
Sure. The first issue would be the Midtown issue, and I know it's a little bit confusing because we're talking about carve-outs and exemption areas.
Yeah.
You've heard two different perspectives tonight, and our staff recommendation is in the middle, make it a little more confusing, but one speaker had asked for no exemption area. So if you go with that, that means that the tree preservation incentive that we're recommending in the glitch, that allows, in exchange for that preservation incentive, an additional story of height, if you go with that first option, you would remove the exemption map and say that that applies across the board. That's option one. The option that the other speaker wanted is to take the exemption area that we've included in the ordinance, because we have said, you know, reluctantly, like I said earlier, our original inclination was to not have any carve-out area, but after talking with the neighborhoods and listening to them, we've said, let's go ahead and carve-out an exemption area for Midtown with the exception of those lots on Monroe Street. And that's what's in the ordinance before you that we're recommending approval of in our agenda item. And then the other option that you're hearing from the neighborhood is to expand the exemption map that we've included to include those parcels that front on Monroe Street. That's the Midtown issue, and then the other issue about parking garages, if you'd like to hear a little bit more about that issue and what's in the ordinance, if so, I'd like, I can turn it over to Bill Podley for a very brief explanation of what that issue is.
Did we get that? I'd like to hear.
Of course.
Yeah.
Hi, Commissioners. Bill Podley with the Growth Management Department. What we were really just trying to do is draw on some of the best practices that we've observed in other cities. You know, usually with a zoning code, there's more than one path that will get you to the same outcome. Right now, our zoning code kind of takes a one-size-fits-all, off-the-shelf, and applies it to all projects across the board. What we have observed in other local governments is the use of not just liner buildings, but also things like murals on the face of the building, green walls, things to activate the space so that it's not just a big monolithic wall of concrete, you know, which a parking garage might typically look like. I think our motivation in doing that was two-fold. One was to not take that one-size-fits-all approach, but to also recognize that sometimes liner buildings, although, you know, that might be what we would ultimately prefer, sometimes liner buildings just aren't, you know, physically possible because of the geometry of the site. You know, by the time you place the primary structure and then the parking garage, and then the liner buildings in front of that, our experience has been that many courses just simply aren't deep enough to handle all three. And as a consequence of that, we've seen a lot of applications for deviations on this very issue in the past. So our thought was that by introducing these other tools that we've observed in other cities, it would facilitate the construction of parking garages, which of course have the public benefit of reducing impervious surface, you know, or surface parking lots. That's where we were headed.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Porter.
I just have some comments. I mean, first, I want to say that I thought it was really good work. I mean, it's incredibly complicated and lengthy, and I thought it was a really great collaborative effort between staff, the community, and the business community, so I do want to commend you on that. That all being said, I'm open to discussion. I want to hear what my colleagues think, but where I am at right now is I would prefer that we re-notice this with some changes, and some of those changes that I would like to see, I mean, given, you know, we have put so much emphasis and so much time on having this Midtown Planning Group. I mean, it really seems like a shame to kind of exclude them from this process or not, you know, it just seems like a shame. I understand that we can make changes after the fact, but I think, I wish this had happened together, but since it hasn't, I would support the Monroe and Midtown exemption. I'm not, right now, in support of the standalone parking garages. I just think that's inconsistent with our goal as a city as we move forward into the future, to be walkable, to be multimodal. And I don't know if there is a way that we can, rather than, you know, incentives are great, but they don't always yield, you know, they're just incentives. They're not a requirement. If there is a way to strengthen that incentive or make it a requirement, I don't know if it can be in this instance, but I would support that. And so those are my feelings on that. Secondarily, and I'll make a separate motion later during sharing of ideas, but I also spoke to Mr. Epstein, and he is by far not the first person to bring up strengthening our tree ordinance and having an update on where we are with our Urban Forest Master Plan, so I'm glad that you brought that up, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and reminding me since he was not able to speak. So that is where I'm at. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few thoughts. I think this, what's proposed tonight is just so broad and covers so many different items, and they're really packed into one item. To call it a glitch, I think is a stretch. We're doing some serious policy changes on items ranging from tree trade-offs, the setbacks, the building heights, to how many parking spaces you get, to where you can put a parking garage, if you do put a parking garage somewhere, what it looks like. Does it have to have a mural? Does it have to have a liner building? All of those conversations, to me, are worthy of individual conversation, so I can't support moving forward today, because I think we need to unpack, and I think it would be benefit to have a workshop and just have each change as a separate item to consider, because we want the land development code to be right, and then we want to stand behind it as things come forward. I do think we need to look at strengthening our tree ordinance, putting that in place, and just standing strongly behind it, and I also think, after we do that, there are development issues that we need to make easier. Like, I hesitate to get into trade-offs with, if you do this, you can have one less parking spot. I think we should look at eliminating parking requirements. We should look at transitioning our city to a more transit-oriented environment. So there'll be growing pains, I think, in those types of scenarios, but I think if we eliminate things like that, and we're not, you know, having to get out a measuring stick to see if a mural is 25% or 50% of a wall, it just gets so convoluted, and I'm not sure it really achieves the goal. So I'm not, I want to see where we get with all of this, but it doesn't seem, we've tied it up with a bill quite yet. Thank you.
Well, this is an interesting conversation. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Let me just say that my concern is that this has been in the works a very long time. A lot of people have worked on this and had opportunity to work on this, and tonight, because somebody who, folks who I really, you know, respect and believe you had a right to do so, would come and make comment and stop all of this work that has been done, causes me some issues, because that's a precedence that we will be setting for the next whatevers. And just because you were able to come and say something and put the brakes on this as opposed to, you know, moving it along, and let's see how that works, and look at possibly maybe in the future doing something else to tighten it or whatever, but right now, it's needed, and it's been vetted to death. And then tonight, we've been presented with something that, I know it sounds logical and it sounds reasonable, but what does it say to the people who put all this time in to do this, that couldn't be here tonight, to say, you know, we really want this to move forward? So it is an interesting conversation, but I want to let folks know that we value that time you put in to make all of this work, and to try to make our land code the best that it can be, but we're going to always find something else. So when do we draw the line and say, okay, we're going to do this, and then we're going to, we'll take a quantum leap to tighten it later?
So let me weigh in, then I'm coming to Commissioner Porter, then coming back to Mayor Protem. I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to take this up on another evening, to be honest with you. I think I would vote to suspend. That's not that I'm not in favor of it. That's not to dismiss all the hard work that's going on. I just don't think it's fully cooked and ready for dinner. I think it's, a little bit more work needs to go into it. I really do want to hear from the Midtown Working Group as well. And I think that we might pass the entire thing with wide support from everybody, and that might be appropriate, or we might continue work on this, and it could change a little bit. I do think we'll have a product eventually. I just don't know if tonight's the night. And so I can, I could support a motion to, I guess it would be to postpone. I feel strongly that we don't necessarily need to vote it down. I don't want to send the message that we're against it, just move to postpone action, even if that requires us to re-advertise and begin again, and help me out here, Madam Attorney. But, colleagues, do you understand what my position is?
Well, on point.
I do.
On point.
And then, real quick, on point, I got Commissioner Porter, then coming back to the Mayor Protem.
So if the Providence Neighborhood Association came in and said just the opposite, what would we do? My point is, is this just keyed on what one group is giving us, or is this keyed up on other groups as well?
That's a great question. I haven't heard from any of the other neighborhoods. I will tell you, if this was going to move forward tonight, I would have a hard time supporting it with the carve-out in place until I've had an opportunity to hear from all of the stakeholders, including the working group, and that does impact that specific geographic area. But I don't have a problem postponing to another night, knowing that I think as a community, we'll have a finished product that we can all wrap our arms around and celebrate. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Williams-Cox, and at a certain point, we do have to move forward, and there is not always consensus. I do think that as far as, you know, what I am hearing, it's not just a select few individuals. They represent neighborhoods. They are the people who have been putting the work in, not the only people, but they have been very involved. I know you were using Providence as an example, but they are members of ATN. ATN represents not all neighborhoods, but several neighborhoods. And again, I think very compelling to me is the working group. So I'm inclined, you know, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I, as far as, Madam Attorney, I think I heard you earlier say that if we just postpone, then we run into the same issue we're having as far as, because if we want to consider these changes, they will be substantive changes.
Yes. It sounds like you are evaluating what might be very substantive changes. And so based on that, you need to not.
Vote it down.
Vote it down, and then there'll be a notice when it's ready to come back. The question is, what do you want to do in between that?
I am sure that we will hear from the working group and ATN, and many of the other stakeholders that have been working very hard on this, moving forward. I got the Mayor Protem, then Commissioner Matlow.
I guess what I'm looking for is what puts us in a position that we don't make these decisions here tonight. I just really don't think that would be the prudent thing to do. The other thing, if you're here representing a group, I would think that that issue would have gone before the group. We had a representative from the chamber. He said he was representing the chamber, and this was the chamber's, I can't, I can't feel comfortable making a decision on input from one individual that's not saying, we took a vote of our group, and this is what we, so I'm having a problem with that as well. So I guess what I'm looking for is how, if we were to vote this, Madam Attorney, to go forward, could we then bring it back? go forward, could we then bring it back for reconsideration? I mean, it's not like carved in stone.
Well, you would be passing an ordinance, you can always, you know, amend an ordinance that's been passed. But if you, if your thought is you want to make substantial changes to what is before you, you would need to renotice this.
But if we passed it tonight, we could always come back and consider these amendments to the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Based on whatever input we got.
Yes. It would have to be renoticed, obviously, if you were going to make amendment.
Commissioners, I, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I think that's the direction that we ought to take. Vote it up tonight, and then have it come back for amendments after we've gotten input on each of these items that have been brought up tonight, after we, they're vetted by various groups, and we have input. But I just, I don't feel comfortable going forward, like I said, making policy on the fly. And that's what this would be tonight, because I don't feel informed enough, and that I understand the issue enough, to move forward just based on what I've heard here tonight and hearing it for the first time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Andrew, then coming over to Commissioner Matlow.
If I may, just to offer a suggestion, I believe that in your material, there were 22 areas of change. Most there is absolute consensus on it, there's been a lot of work done on that. Might I suggest, I think if you don't vote this tonight, you're closing the public hearing and giving us direction on how you'd want to proceed, we could bundle those that there seem to be no debate or dispute about, and bring that back in another introduction of ordinance. So we travel back through the process, leave those things that we still need work on, the tree incentive, the garage piece, and that may be a way to move the ball forward as opposed to suspending all those things that seem to have been developed well. I'd offer that as a suggestion.
Okay, I got Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Porter.
On point. Madam Attorney, is, can we do that? Or is that considered a substantive change?
An introduction of a new ordinance, so certainly you can do that.
Okay, so we, I want to make sure I understand what Mr. City Manager said. So we can vote up on, no?
So what you're doing is you're voting this down tonight?
Okay.
And then it would be another introduction of ordinance, which would contain those things about which there is, there is little debate.
Okay.
And that would come back before you for, for approval, first introduction in a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I like that.
And then, then we, so then we
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So then we would consider the issues where there's not agreement.
That is correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any pending developments or anything that we're aware of that are counting on this to pass before moving forward? For them to be able to move forward?
Dr. Jummerville?
I'll ask Karen to answer that, but it's probably worth saying, I think we skipped past the initial, what the impetus of this is, and you'll recall, the neighborhoods, some neighborhood members said, hey, you know, we don't like the idea of variances and deviations.
Right.
This is an attempt to remove the need for those. And so I'm not sure any depend upon this, because they could achieve, you know, maybe the same outcome by the mechanisms we have in place today, but Karen, I'm not sure if anybody's waiting on these changes.
Not that I'm aware of, I think you've stated it perfectly, that people were excited to not have as many deviations, and this might help address that issue, but I don't know of any specific project that was waiting on a vote tonight.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't, we weren't causing any delays on any items or whatnot. But I do, I share Commissioner Richardson's objections to making policy on the fly, but I also feel we should have either a workshop or a conversation as a city commission before we get to the public hearing, because there's so many items here that we would weigh on on. And to me, it's not, I'm not, you know, listening to one public speaker or one group. I have strong feelings about, you know, some of these items, and this is the first time as a board we've ever been able to sit collectively and give our, our individual opinion. So, you know, it would be my desire to see, when we're doing so many steps and changes, to really iron those items out in a different setting, make the up or down vote on what we want to see included, and then at least when we get to the public hearing, we know what's in it is what we asked to be in, and not to discount the work of staff, because they're in such a difficult position between two traditionally opposing views, you know, at all times. And I recognize how difficult that, that would be, but, but I think to avoid this happening in the future, that would be helpful. But I do think if there's no impending protection or no impending development right away, there's not a material outcome that's at jeopardy at this meeting, I would make the motion that we, I guess the motion we would have to reject, or?
Do not adopt.
Do not adopt. Option two, do not adopt tonight. I feel comfortable voting on that, and then next steps.
Motion on table for option number two, made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim, I will support it as well. Let's bring this in for Landon. Any final comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of option number two, which is do not adopt ordinance number 21-033, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Do we have anything else to come before us at the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Since we did not adopt, I hope that this will be an opportunity for those who didn't get a chance to weigh in already, to come to the table and weigh in, and if Commissioner Matlow's suggestion of having a workshop is, it happens, this will be an opportunity for others to weigh in. I know that ATN, I know, I've spoken to them about this, some of their members about this, but there are other groups out there that are not a part of ATN, and I think there was another group listed here. We want to make sure that as we move forward, we have as many voices as possible, because this is for everybody. And I'm not saying nobody denied anybody the opportunity, but here's yet another opportunity to weigh in if you want to weigh in.
All right. We have no other business before us at the public hearing. We are on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clerk, do we have any un-agenda business speakers?
Mayor, we do have several speakers on un-agenda items. The first is CJ Johnson, followed by Freddie Miller.
Excellent. Hey, thanks for joining us, we appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
CJ Johnson, 1900 South Harbor City Boulevard, Melbourne, Florida. I appreciate the invite from the commission to come speak. I started Breakpoint Law years ago with the sole intention of helping cities and counties around the state of Florida and around the country with vacant and foreclosed property registration ordinances, and helping them manage the programs in the best way, in the most successful way possible. There are about 70 cities and counties throughout the state of Florida that have adopted these ordinances and are using them quite successfully. Tallahassee is, is not one of those cities. What the program will do, it will require during a foreclosure or a vacant property, it will require the registration of the mortgagees, so the banking entities. So that way, the city knows which properties are vacant. It helps with all the health and safety issues, the blight issues, who you can contact, when there's an issue with the property. Typically, you just can't call 1-800-BANK-AMERICA, property quick enough. But this will require local property managers, and it solves a lot of issues that these properties have when they're in foreclosure or have blight issues. A lot, a lot of cities around the country are using these funds that are coming in for affordable housing and other initiatives, and it's been done very successfully. I was, I was happy to see the, the report that came back for code enforcement today. It looks like you guys are doing a great job up here, and this is just another tool that, in the toolbox for code enforcement, to be able to help the city with a lot of these problems. And luckily, right now, the housing market's so great, we're not seeing as many now, but as rate hikes are pending and other issues may come up, there could be an increase in foreclosure of property. And as an example, I spoke with the city of Annapolis earlier today, and they had a tragic accident where two firefighters got, got killed in a vacant property during a fire, and they want to talk about using these tools to help identify these properties for police and fire issues before moving into the property, so they can have more knowledge of things that are happening. I invite any questions, and thank you for the invitation to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have, by the way, Mr. Clerk?
We have five in person and three virtual.
Excellent, okay. Our next speaker.
Next is Freddie Miller.
Mr. Miller, good to see you, sir. Name and address for the record, please, three minutes.
6001 Shawmont Street, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm coming here just to thank the, thank Mayor Daley. It was like about two years to the day that I expressed my disappointment that the capital of Florida didn't have a Martin Luther King Day parade. And on that day, Mayor Daley expressed that he had the same vision that I did for us having a parade here in Tallahassee. I would like to thank you, Commissioner Cox, and Dr. Davis especially, for making this happen. And I would like to thank all of the commissioners for recognizing the need for a Martin Luther King Day parade here in Tallahassee, Florida. I just give credit to you all that you are hearing the voice of the people of Tallahassee, and that's a great, that's a great commission board, and I really appreciate that, because I was so proud just to be a part of it and to see it happen here in Tallahassee. And I'm looking forward to next year where we can have more participation from our colleges, high schools, and businesses here in Tallahassee. So I would like to offer my time and energy to make this happen if need be. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Certainly do appreciate your kind words, but let me be sure that we are clear. Well, we all unanimously supported the idea. It was Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox that was the driving force behind that incredible parade and starting the legacy. So I wish I could take credit, but that was Diane.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I knew that, but I just want to be respectful to her.
Appreciate it, man, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Cox.
And, and to the city manager and deputy city manager and their tremendous staff, the diversity and inclusion director's office as well, Angela Hendrick, is awesome. Thank you.
Well, I know it's a lot of people behind such an event to take place, so I just can't thank everybody, but I'm pretty sure everyone who participated is very, I was very pleased with that, and I hope the city of Tallahassee is gonna move forward in continuing that event.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Our next speaker signed up was Joseph Batavia. I believe he has left, so I'll move on to the next one and call him if he should return to chambers. Next is Jenny Heffelfinger.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jenny Heffelfinger, and I live at 2774 Sweet Ridge Street, that is in the Canopy Development. I'm here today to ask for your support or solutions to a problem that has been occurring in our neighborhood for about a year and a half. My complaints are about public nuisance and personal safety issues, coming from District 850 on Fleishman. That is the family entertainment center that abuts our property. When my husband and I chose to build four years ago in Canopy, we knew there was gonna be a business there. We were told it was gonna be office buildings. However, we have gotten used to having 850 in our backyard, but since they began, since they opened in August of 2020, our neighborhood has experienced a lot of loud noises, complaints from neighbors. We have had the police out to our neighborhood multiple times. It is just escalating. It started with people being in the parking lot after hours. It started with crowds being behind the building, who turned out to be employees, after hours, partying, having fun, playing loud music. And I don't begrudge anyone having a good time, but this is after hours, which is typically on the weekends when they close at 12 and 1 o'clock a.m. We have families in our neighborhood who are complaining that their children are being awakened. The other night, we had, my son came out into the living room and said, what is going on? What's wrong with our house? It feels like pellets are hitting our wall. We walked outside, we went and looked at 850, and they were shooting off fireworks. My husband called 850, talked, asked to talk to the manager. 20 minutes later, the manager told him they had too much to worry about inside and to go ahead and call the police, which we did. We called the police. The police can come out, but their hands are tied. There are no, no loitering signs. There apparently is no longer a noise nuisance, which I wasn't aware of, because when I called to find out about the building that was going up, and we knew there would be loud noise, I was told by the city that there was a noise ordinance and we could share information. Well, there hasn't been. Most recently, though, there are some more serious actions that are impacting the personal safety and are becoming more of a public nuisance.
You have about 30 seconds.
We expect that these, these are not patrons, we believe that they're endangering folks' lives and personal property. About 8:45 last Sunday, we heard loud trucks, music, screeching tires. We went outside, there was smoke taller than the building in the entire parking lot. Tires were screeching, they were doing donuts. This is not the first time this has happened, or the second or third. There was loud music again, people were cheering, one car sped down the side of the building backwards, screeched his tires, turned around and zoomed back into the parking lot, where he could have hit a child coming out of the parking lot. We've asked the police for support. They have done the best they can. They said we need no loitering signs. We also think that a barrier would help, a sound barrier. There is a two-foot berm.
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna need you to wrap up your comments.
I'm finished. I just hope that there's some way, the owner will not work with us, the police's hands are tied, our HOA has not supported us, they're still owned by the builder of the neighborhood, so we have no one helping us to figure out how to work with this problem that is impacting our entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You'll be happy to know that at the next meeting, or the meeting immediately after, we will have the new noise ordinance that will be coming before us for passage, that will address specifically the issues that you're discussing right now. We're experiencing this in other parts of the, the community as well, that we are familiar with these after-hour noise complaints at establishments where people are gathering that have nothing to do with the, with the business itself.
Right.
If you would reach out again to the business about the loitering signs and try to get a handle on the situation, that would be wonderful. Okay, excellent.
And it's not just the noise, it's the cars and the personal safety.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
There are kids in that parking lot.
Yes, ma'am.
At all hours.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the loitering, and, and that's what Chief was just referring to, so, yes, ma'am. But you will be very pleased with the, I think you will be very pleased with the new noise ordinance that will be coming before this body in the next couple of meetings.
Thank you. We have been pleased with the support from the police, but every time we talk to them, they say their hands are tied, mostly because of the noise ordinance, but also because of no loitering signs.
Yes, ma'am.
He can have anybody in his parking lot he wants, at any time.
The new noise ordinance, is my understanding, specifically addresses the ability for the police to take action.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for coming out, we appreciate it. Our next speaker.
Matt Heffelfinger.
Good evening, how you doing? My name's Matt Heffelfinger, I live at 2774 Sweet Ridge, with my wife. I don't know if I need to do this, but I did, every time that something happens at the 850, I go out on my back porch and I film it, and I have video, and I think one of our other speakers has already noticed some of the commission members, or I sent something to them. I don't know if it's appropriate just for me to play, but when she's talking, when my wife is talking about the cars in the parking lot, 15 cars, all different colors, I know they go to different areas in town, but again, and, and the only problem, one of the problems is, sometimes these things happen while the business is open, and then sometimes when it's not. So I don't think, I'm not gonna waste your time and play, I have a two-minute video of it, but just to let you know that it is extremely dangerous, and there are kids in the, in the parking lot, and families that have kids, so I'm just reiterating what my wife said. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, we appreciate you all coming out.
Next speaker is Nancy Marcenac.
Marcenac, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Nancy Marcenac, 2762 Sweet Ridge Street. I have been before you a few times regarding Premier Builder and District 850, so I should be a little familiar to you. Unfortunately, I'm back because Unfortunately, I'm back because things aren't resolved. And I appreciate, first of all, that I emailed all of you with some videos and a picture of what the Heffelfingers, myself, and another person in our neighborhood experience on a daily basis. I am right there behind District 850, next to them. And, um, so when I emailed you all that stuff, thank you, Mayor, for responding back, saying you look forward to seeing me tonight. So, I appreciate that. And also to Commissioner Porter, your email was great, and you had a wonderful suggestion. You said, can you possibly get some names backing me up so that I don't look like a errand? So, I want to show you all the names in the last two days. Over 115 people signed. The four of us walked in the rain and in 50-degree weather, I mean, excuse me, 32-degree weather to get those signatures, to show you guys that we've had enough. They, there's a statute about breach of peace and disorderly conduct, and they've totally, 877.03, if I'm not mistaken, and they've totally broken that over and over again. Back in April of last year, I had Karen Jumminville, Michelle Humeleke, TPD, Wayne Tetter, and probably about another 10 people back there, saying they will support us and try to help us take care of this. It's still an issue. There's no border between them and us. I get headlights in my bedroom like it's a flashing show constantly. The, um, the berm that was supposed to be between us is nothing. It stands. That is not going to do anything. Um, he doesn't take care of anything that has to do with the parking lot. We talked about the no loitering and the noise and all that kind of stuff. The, the main issue is that he's not a good neighbor. TPD has spoken to him more than once, and I know, Chief, you said you spoke to him today. This, this is not, this is a common thing, and his response that I gave you in the email is his response. He doesn't care. It's about the bottom dollar. I come from a family of sole proprietorships. I don't wish anything bad on anyone that has a business that's trying to make it, especially during these times of COVID. But you got to be a good neighbor. You got to respect the people that you've, you've been put in the middle of. I mean, I'm going to be honest. I don't know who signed on the dotted line and said, hey, this is a good idea. Let's put this kind of place, which is like a Dave and Buster's from South Florida where I grew up, and say, oh, there's an ALS. It's just a living center here. We got a church and school here and a brand-new development. This is a great idea. Let's put this right here. Oh, and let's, let them have alcohol as well. Don't think that was a very intelligent idea. And so, one of the things that I said is the noise ordinance, which you've already addressed, and I had, uh, messaged you, Chief Reddell, in regards to that.
Just a few seconds remaining.
Okay. And then, um, so District 850 needs to put the no loitering signs. They need to be a good neighbor. And we also asked that someone look at the alcohol that is consumed in the parking lot and the alcohol that's actually being brought into the building from people. And as far as I know, that is against his liquor license, and so I think that should be brought into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much for everything that you do for us, and we hope that you can help support us in this.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Our next speakers are connected virtually. I believe Jeff Blair has disconnected, so we will go to Eunice Johnson-Sheppard.
Eunice Johnson-Sheppard, are you with us?
Hear me?
Uh, yes, yes, we can. Your name and address for the record.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Your name and address for the record, please.
Eunice Johnson-Sheppard, 1350 Mayhand Drive. Good evening. I'm the Leon County Organizer with Florida Rising, and tonight I'm here to speak on housing again. I've come before to, uh, address ongoing issues at Adam Place Codominiums, minimum communication at Orange Avenue Residence, and now displacement with folks at the Florida Sun Estates, previously known as the Meadow Mobile Home Park. I want to thank Commissioners Porter and Richardson for being on the ground for the, at the residence rights workshop. This is real life. Families are being separated. People who have lived here for 30-plus years are being forced to move out with other family members or even out of Tallahassee. Why? Because people like Derek Vickers, who's an Orlando resident, comes in, buys the land and everything on it, changes the rules on the people who, and he's never had a conversation with them, and everyone else is just left to figure it out. Would you all support a landlord registry so we can know the history of the, of these buyers and apartment managers or tenant's bill of rights? Lastly, I want to talk about rent control. The price of a 480-square-foot apartment is listed at $495 a month right now. Other places are going for $600 to $800 per room, not including first, last, security, credit score, rental history of the rental, renter, criminal record, and more. All of these things come into play when applying for housing, and people who haven't gone through this process in 20-plus years are being forced to come up with these funds immediately. A news article came out today plainly stating, time is running out and people have nowhere to go. While not having anywhere to go is not, is, is an immediate issue for residents at the Mobile Home Park, it's also an issue for many across Tallahassee. Is there a rent control ordinance that can be put, put in place while the pandemic is still ongoing? The pandemic may become a normal, and placing some type of rent control on the price that others are allowed to charge to have a roof over their head should be too. No matter if you're trying to rent or buy property, it's hard, and we need help from you all who have the power to make these necessary changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Unique Willingham.
Are you with us?
Uh, I see the name on the screen. Unique Willingham.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can. Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Okay. My name is, I'm Unique Willingham. I live at 1906 Sherwood Drive. I would like to speak about the Meadows Mobile Home Park, um, on behalf of my father-in-law. He's lived there 30-plus years, and all of his closest friends have as well. This is a man who does not have a fixed income. He works for everything that he has. And, um, my husband and I were forced to decide on our home and our situation to help our father with his rent increase. They literally tripled his rent, well, sent out a notice that they will be tripling the rent from 350 currently, what he's been paying last year this time, back to nearly $900. And this is a man who, you know, all he wants to do is pay his bills, watch his TV, and live his normal life. I think that's unfair if there is a such thing. I'm not sure what a grandfather clause is, but I heard other mobile home parks are doing it. He owns his, his mobile home out there. He, the only thing he does pay is lot rent. And I think that is just totally unfair, especially they told, they sent out notices, um, to the people living there that if you are a renter and you lease your home, you have to immediately buy it. And I think, uh, how fast things are moving there and how unfair things are moving, something needs to be done about that. My father is almost 70 years old, and what does he know about going to the office and speaking and hiring a lawyer or anything like that? I appreciate you all for listening in on this matter, but, uh, I'm kind of at a loss, and I don't know what to do. And I just appreciate the ears and the works of others for this, especially the little people of, and the renters of that, um, community. Like, they want to be heard, and they want to be taken care of and shown that those other people are listening and caring for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
If Ms. Willingham is, is still listening, um, if you wouldn't mind sharing your contact information with me, my email is jack-porter@talgov.com. We would love to connect you with some help if we can.
All right, hold on. Um, should, should I give you my email address right now?
Sure, we can do that.
I E W I L L I N G H A M at yahoo.com. So, that's I E Willingham at yahoo.com. My phone number is 954-892-1959. Um, thank you all so much. And on behalf of my dad, he says, any help, any, anything you do is, is helpful to me. That's what he says.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor, that was the last speaker I have.
All right. Is there anybody else that's here in public that'd like to speak on unengaged items? Okay, let's go to, uh, City Commission, uh, discussion. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few items. One is, I would like to, I wanted to bring up what we discussed earlier about our tree ordinance and the Urban Forest Master Plan. I don't see, um, Ms. Jumminville in the room, but I was wondering, Mr. Manager, um, and if I need to make a motion, I can, if we can get an update on the Urban Forest Master Plan and where we are in, not updating the plan, but an update on where we are in implementing the plan.
I'd be happy to forward that, certainly.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know what action we need to, we, we should take or is appropriate to take to, um, revisit our tree ordinance. This is something that I can say I've, I've heard a lot about. I'm sure all of us have. I heard a lot about it during, on the campaign trail. I'm, I would like to revisit it and strengthen it and get feedback. I don't know what boards or what people we want to consult to do that, but, um, I would make a motion that we move forward with revisiting our tree ordinance.
Second. The motion on the table is to bring back an agenda item on the tree ordinance, a presentation on the tree ordinance?
I guess so, yeah. An update on the tree, you know, a review of our tree ordinance, and then from there, we can discuss if we want to take further action to, to change it.
Okay, in discussion. Motion's been made by Commissioner Porter to bring back an agenda item, specifically an update on our tree ordinance, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Passes unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. And then, um, three more things that are, I hope will be quick. I was not able to attend the retreat. I know, Mr. Mayor, you brought up what it might look like to expand tempo. I don't know if you planned to take any further action on that. I don't really know if I'm asking for anything in particular. I would be curious to see what we, what our staff thought that could look like, whether it was incremental or what. I'm curious to have a, a bigger discussion about that, and at the very least, to put it, um, on the minds of, of those who are working on our budget, because that will require money moving forward if we decide to do that. Second to last, I was wondering, so have we, you know, one of our speakers mentioned a gun buyback program? Has the city ever done anything like that?
Mr. Manager.
I'm looking at the chief. It's been a while. We have, and it's something, it is a tool that's talked about. It's complicated, and we've relied upon, in fact, the deputy city manager and I have talked about that numerous times over the number of years, you know. Ultimately, it's concluded that, uh, there are better resources. It's expensive to get, uh, a meaningful quantity, so we've not brought that back before the commission. But it, it's a tool that's out there that's talked about. The gentleman mentioned it earlier, but it, it's not risen. We've done it, and it's not risen to the level of, of, you know, bringing it back for a recommendation to do it.
Mayor.
Sure, on point. Commissioner.
Yeah, on point. Thank you. Also, Commissioner Porter and, and Deputy Chief Smith can speak to this because she's active with NOBLE, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. They have done buyback, gun buyback programs. And what you'll find, I, I, I don't, no, I don't think they had much success. Because one of the things I know I heard reported when they were doing them, people would bring a gun that was not even operable, and they would.
Just take the money.
Yeah. So, those, those are the kinds of things that people were doing, and it didn't change a whole lot. Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was, that was their experience with the gun buyback.
Okay, thank you.
Project.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, on point.
On point, yes, ma'am.
Not long after I came to the commission, there had been a rash of shootings, and I remember vividly in my office, uh, City Manager Gold and Deputy City Manager, uh, Ms. Barber, and I talked about that and some groundwork, some research on the street. It sounds good to read and to see it on television, but the research on the street was that this group was not giving up their guns. If this group over here was not giving up their guns, because nobody wants to be out there without their guns. So, that was another reason why we didn't move forward at that time with, uh, with a gun buyback, and that used to work. But nowadays, you know, you got these guns that you can take apart and do all kinds of things with, these ghost guns and what have you. It's just really technology has, uh, has kind of put us in a position where you, what, what do you do? Lock your car, take your gun in the house helps more than anything.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Porter.
And then, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And lastly, I had a, you know, I, I was able to attend the community engagement session about the Northwood Mall. I was really impressed. I thought it was absolutely a success. I was wondering if we planned to have, I know we are a little bit ways out, but any discussion about what we are going, what we plan to do with the TPD building, the current TPD building and that site. I had a town hall, and there was a lot of really good discussion and interest in that. And, and it came from, it, it, that came from an op-ed that was written in the paper by Kathy McGuire. And I was wondering where staff is at with, with that discussion.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Commissioner Porter, thank you for that question. I think it's a good question. I, I can tell you where we, uh, where our thought process is as staff is, I mentioned, the new facility, we would expect to be online in 2024, and so that would have TPD moving out at that point. And we don't want to be premature. We're talking about the disposition of that site with a lot of time between now and then. Things change. Lots of things change. And so, you, you know, we, we don't believe it's mature to have that conversation yet, because I think to have it is going to be a brainstorm with the community. I, I do believe that will be had, and it will be, um, you know, well commented on. But I, I think we're probably two years too early practically, at least a year before we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all the comments from me tonight.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I wanted to echo Mr. Freddie Miller's, um, thanks for everyone who participated and, uh, made our, our first annual Martin Luther King Day a success. The Day of Dialogue was, was wonderful. Um, the closeout with the, with the, uh, the band was wonderful. Our community, um, had a great time. I'm looking forward to it being even bigger and better next year. The designers and creators of the city's float, let me just say that it was, it was just remarkable. It was, um, a sight to behold, and to hear the story of how it came to be and, uh, what was used for. So, hats off to, to, um, Ms. Angela Hendricks and her, her staff with Diversity and Inclusion, and to, uh, the, uh, other city staff, Parks and Re. Everybody who played a role and participated in, um, in, in that day, and we had other community-wide support, so very appreciative of that. We're fastly approaching February, which is, is, you know, by most many considered to be Black History Month. Of course, um, Black History is 365 for me, because I'm black every day. But I want, that, along with, um, Valentine's Day, Super Bowl, a lot of things happening in February. But I did, I wanted to just bring to our attention that, um, it is important to recognize these events, these, these things every year, because it sends a message that we are in, in tune and in touch with what's happening in our community. So, I look forward to, um, hearing, hearing or seeing some recognition of at least Black History Month. I know that the Super Bowl is not being played in Florida this year, and we don't have a Florida team in it. I'm sorry, Reese. He tried. It didn't work out. Came close. But, um, so just, just recognizing the, uh, Black history and accomplishments of, uh, of blacks and African-Americans, especially in this community, is, is, is very important. And there is, um, a film, a documentary, uh, that was created by a local Valerie, not, not Valerie, here's, yeah, Valerie Schoon. Thinking hers, make sure I don't call her sister's name, um, who, that. yeah, Valerie Schoon, making her, make sure I don't call her sister's name, that depicts what happened here many, many years ago. And in our discussion in our community, our nationwide, we're hearing about, you know, critical race theory. This is not critical race, this is history, and it is indeed what happened here. And Mayor, you and I were there for the debut of that film, The Invisible History. I encourage us to watch it and educate and enrich ourselves on the history of all cultures, but in February specifically, since it's being designated as Black History Month. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
You know what, if we could take it a step further, I would like to propose, the weather's nice enough, let's find a nice outdoor venue, whether it's on Clement Plaza, whether it's at the Cascades Park Camp Theater, and have a public showing and invite Valerie to come, maybe have a panel discussion. I think it would be, I think it would be very powerful. It is an incredible movie, award nominated, and, yeah-
Emmy nominated.
Yeah, Emmy nominated. I think it would be fantastic, and because Valerie lives right here and she's local, I think it'd be great. So, can we task the diversity team to work with Parks and Recreation to come up with an incredible evening at Cascades or evening at Clement Plaza to have the show? I think it'd be great.
I think it would be as well.
Do you want a motion, or can you just take that directive and run with it?
I think it's loud and clear.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Awesome.
And the Riley House is also working on some things as well, so.
Be great. Excellent, excellent. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few quick points. The Urban Forest Master Plan, as I recall, has items in it that would need to be funded. It had different things that could be explored, so I think furthering some of the goals in the Urban Forest Master Plan would probably be a budget conversation at the budget hearing, but it would be good to have an update on that as requested. Secondly, the noise at District 850, I know we're working through the new ordinance to make it convenient and easy, but I do think we have complaints and addresses that are nearby, and let's get sound meters there and see if there's anything we can do in the existing ordinance, whether it's cumbersome or not, to see if we can provide some immediate relief. In the meantime, I think would be, I think have some thankful neighbors if we could use what we can. Third, the Ethics Board jurisdiction over the CRA Blueprint Department of Place, I think we should look, explore expanding it by, go to referendum. I know we can't make the decision for Blueprint. I think likely if we supported the CRA, we'd support it, but I'd make a motion that we ask our attorney to give us an update on what the process would be to bring Blueprint and the Department of Place and CRA under the independent Ethics Board, including the elected officials, executive level staff, and similar covered individuals as the city policy, and also send a communication to the Blueprint Department of Place and CRA staff, letting them know of our desire to have them weigh in as well.
I'll second that.
Motion on table by Commissioner Matlow for an item to come back before the City Commission regarding how to expand the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board to include, and I'm assuming that's also CRTPA, CRA, and Blueprint?
Sure.
Okay. And it was seconded by Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, you are recognized.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Matlow, I understand the spirit of where you are, but City Attorney has already told us what it would take.
Right.
So if, you know, it would take going to, back to the citizens to expand the charter and what have you, so if you're looking for steps on how to do that, I can understand that, and we don't have to put those boards on notice of our desire, because that's not my desire. So, but the next steps would be, if that's what we want done, then it would have to go to the voters.
Yeah. Follow-up?
I understand.
Madam Attorney, sitting as a City Commission, could we put that on the ballot for the CRA? Or would the CRA have to vote on that? And then same question for Blueprint and CRTPA?
Well, the process is set out in 166, and it can be accomplished a couple of ways. Obviously, the citizens can have a voter initiative, as it was done to start with, and how it got on with the referendum before, or of course, the city could do an ordinance, and then that ordinance would have to go to the voters for approval.
Okay. And if this, can the city initiate an ordinance?
With regard to members that are not under the city's charter, I mean, that can't be done.
Right.
You know, it can't be done. They would have to, you know, want that, and I don't-
Nor could it be done by charter expansion.
Right, no.
You cannot include the county commissioners.
Not the county, but, you know, those who sit, city commissioners who sit on those boards.
Correct, right. So, would the CRA Board or the Blueprint Board be able to take a vote to initiate having their staff come under independent ethics board jurisdiction, or have that go to voters?
I would-
I don't want to put you on the spot, but that's the question I'm asking.
To actually explore that from a more legal perspective, it just seems to me that the current, the city of Tallahassee has no jurisdiction over the county.
Right.
So, it seems like, it just couldn't be. Now, I suppose the county maybe could have some countywide referendum to put, you know, folks under some board, but to put it under the city of Tallahassee board seems odd.
Well, I mean, that would be the question I would try to get. I don't want to put you on the spot today, but that would be the research and the answer I think we should get from the City Attorney, is if it's possible, what it would look like?
I certainly can look into it.
If the county commission would have to weigh in and that sort of thing. I expect all those to be part of the conversation and the answer, but, and if it's, they can't come under our board, or if there's the need for an interlocal agreement, if there's a need for a cost association, whatever all those questions are, help us frame how we could move that forward.
And your question is the city of Tallahassee Ethics Board?
Correct.
The motion on table is to bring back an agenda item, discuss how we could move forward with this. I'm comfortable as well with the city attorneys. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it fails two to three with the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and Commissioner Williams Cox in dissent. You have the floor, Commissioner Matlow.
And final item, the chairman of the Leon County Commission has identified eight areas within capital circle that aren't within the city limits, with the expansion of Wilani bringing northern rural areas into the urban service area. In the city, we're really seeing a shift in the center of our city, and I do think it would be beneficial in the long run if we focus our investment efforts and really growing infrastructure and expanding infrastructure in the urban core. So I think it would be good for the city to make every effort we can within our means to bring anything within capital circle into the city limits for both services and for voting as well. I mean, we know it would require support of the voters in those areas, as well as the property owners, if the voters aren't the property owners. But I do think a first step that we could take is just to make contact with the property owners and voters in those areas, engage interest to see if they are interested in coming within the city limits. So I would make a motion that we just ask staff to reach out by phone or mail to those owners within those districts, and we can provide a list, I don't have it on hand, just letting them know of the interest and soliciting feedback if they're interested or not.
There is a motion on the table for staff to proactively reach out to the neighborhoods that are within county, within the-
County.
Within capital circle.
Within capital circle that are not within the city limits, to see if they are interested in beginning the voluntary annexation process?
Well, I believe, I mean, in the end, they would have to support it, but, you know, we would be able to put it to them for a vote, and I think we shouldn't move forward with that if it doesn't seem like there's any support for it, but if it seems like a majority would support it, then I think we should move forward, but this would be the groundwork to get to there.
Hey, it's been seconded by Commissioner Porter. Commissioner Williams Cox, you're recognized.
On point, I wanted to mention to Commissioner Matlow that I did respond to Commissioner Proctor. Every time he writes, I do respond to him by talking, but this time I did put something in writing, of course, I could not share it with you on that point. A part of the Southside Action Plan annexation is on the table for those areas inside the urban core. And what I said to Commissioner Proctor, as well as I put in a letter, we cannot force annexation. And so what I've done is I've gone so far as to reach out to the Supervisory Relations Office to find out where those precincts are located. I've talked to the county administrator to find the John Baker counterpart at the county to try to find where those neighborhoods are and who they are, and I've said to Commissioner Proctor that if a resident, citizens in those neighborhoods are interested in annexing, then they can come forward and let's have, come to the table, let's have a meeting, let's have a discussion, because if they're not willing to do voluntary annexation, we can't force it on them. And I have received no comment from anybody in those neighborhoods-
Right.
Saying that they want to be annexed, because it is a financial, there would be financial impact. And 20 years ago, when it was put before them, they rejected it. I know that there are probably different people there now, and we've been talking about this, Devin's in the back of the room and Wayne's back there, we've been, and the city manager, we've been talking about this and bringing more people on the south end into the city, but we can't force them, and neither have we identified anyone who is ready and willing to say, hey, take us, take us.
Right.
And so what I said to Commissioner Proctor, I understand the spirit and the passion of it, and I do, I agree, I'm in support of that, but we cannot do it without those residents agreeing to it. And so I'm trying to find who in those areas are in agreement to doing this, and Mark Early and Wayne, we've, via email, we've looked at maps to try to see where those precincts are, to see where, you know, what areas they are in, so that we can try to not just go out there blindly, but try to reach out and let folks know that we're ready to have a conversation, and try to sell them on the benefits of city services that they could receive, sidewalks, lights, you know, those kinds of things by being in the city. But we got to sell them on it, because it's going to impact their utility bill, it's going to impact them financially, and they may or may not want to accept that. So my point is, we're doing legwork on it already as a part of the Southside Action Plan, as well as responding to Commissioner Proctor. So I've done that, I've sent a letter, and I'll be happy to share it with, now that I've mentioned it, I can share, I guess I can share it with your aides, so you can see what I said to Commissioner Proctor.
On point.
On point.
Mayor, thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, it has to be, I don't think it's appropriate for us to reach out to neighborhoods, encouraging them to be annexed into the city. They have to take the initiative. I remember when I lived on Pasco Court, it was a private street within the city limits. Nobody from the city came to me and said, you know, do you want to have that street taken over by the city? We had to take that initiative and get the petitions done and go through the process. So I think if those individuals are interested in being annexed into the city, then that should be an initiative of the individuals who live in those areas. I would say too, it will be a financial impact on the property owner, but it will also be a financial impact on the county, because that's money then that will be coming to the city and not the county. So I can't imagine that they're going to be all excited about-
No, they'd pay both.
Oh, they would pay both?
If they were annexed, then they would pay, a taxpayer would pay-
You're right, you're right, yeah, you're right.
They'd give, increase their tax-
Exactly, you're right, absolutely. So, I think where Commissioner Williams Cox is, is at a good point, and it's, I think, the right direction to go in, but I don't think that we should expend city staff time reaching out. I just don't think it's the appropriate role for city staff to reach out to individuals in those areas to determine what their position is on annexation.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, and just to follow up on point, I hear you, Commissioner Williams Cox, and I also hear, you know, what you're saying, but I do think there could be a role in facilitating it and just asking the question and getting feedback, and I think we have the resources to do that. You know, when we did, when we expanded Wilani into the urban services area, the city was actually the applicant on that. You know, we did take up an extra role in helping them expand into the urban services areas. I don't think it's too far of a stretch to look at these neighborhoods and do a little bit of the legwork, so, I mean, we take an up or down vote?
So, okay, let's take a vote on the motion on the table that was made by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Porter, using city resources to proactively recruit in the unincorporated those neighborhoods that are adjacent to city, and also, more importantly, I guess your focus is those pockets within capital circle that are in the unincorporated area to have them voluntarily annexed. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Porter, I'm sorry, were you in favor or against?
Oh, I voted for.
Okay. So it fails on a three-two vote with the mayor, the mayor pro temp, and Commissioner Williams Cox in dissent. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mayor pro temp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only had one thing. Yesterday at the launch of the Ignite Tally project, I had an opportunity to speak with one of the staff persons at Goodwill, and she pointed out to me that they assist individuals with rehousing. I didn't realize that that was a service that Goodwill provided, but what I did was to call Abena and give Abena her contact information, so that that partnership could be formed, and what I had in mind was maybe assisting those individuals who are moving out of the Meadows Mobile Home Park, if there was an opportunity through that partnership to help them with rehousing, if they're having to move out. And I understand there are several that are planning to move, and so Abena said she would, she would reach out to that young lady and hopefully start that partnership and bring some further resources to bear for the individuals in the Meadows, or Sun Florida Estates, whatever it's called now. And that's all that I had.
Excellent. Everyone have a wonderful evening, we stay in adjourn.